Budget. Thank you very much. All right, good morning. Thank you. Yeah, so I handed over a few documents. First one is all the point presentation that'll be on the screen as well. So that we have a hard copy of that and then both of Fund thirteen and Fund nineteen, so Fund thirteen, Golden Bridge and Fund nineteen, solid waste. Twenty twenty six preliminary budget. It's gone through work session, individual meeting with the administrator. And I think it even I missed the last public works committee, maybe for family emergency, but there was also some discussion there. The two handouts, the larger sheets, Fund thirteen, Fund nineteen, just kind of show you what's on those real quick. I know the numbers are plentiful and small, but kind of left to right across the spreadsheet is, you know, the organization, object codes, the account description. And then the first, I guess, like fourth column is a preliminary twenty twenty six budget entry. Next to that is twenty twenty five approved budget. And then kind of bracketed in the old vertical lines is is change in dollars and then as the percent as well, just to show increase, decrease per line. Then the next column after that is is where we're at today, this fiscal year. As of July tenth, I exported from the other minus where we were at. For each of those accounts or order, object codes, and then beyond that are just historic information, twenty twenty four budget and actuals and twenty twenty three budget and actuals, just to kind of give as much information as really possible for to show trends and and past activity in each each line. So I guess with it, so then that's mirrored both in the Fund thirteen and Fund nineteen budget, I have safety. And then if there's some notes, I have those as well from that column. But then both are double sided. Obviously, you've already was a few more lines than solid waste. So we have admin on the first page, engineering and construction in orange. Highway maintenance in black. Green is profit equipment and then purple would be our revenues. Then I also summed the totals for each of those at the bottom, just to kind of show up within the department and organizational change or, you know, increase or decrease for the budget. Lots of numbers. A lot of good information that I guess what we're asking for. And then again, that is mirrored in solid waste, Fund nineteen as well. Transfer station in black and then the back page. The compost, yard waste ingredients and revenues and some expenses in purple again. And we'll go through a little bit. And this is all of the detail for the entire Golden Bridge and solid waste budgets. I think in the presentation, it's taken on the highlights of that. So kind of right in your face, give it all to you on one slide from Golden Bridge. We'll start with Fund thirteen. I have some historic information on our levy, so back from twenty twenty one through twenty twenty fives. That's those are just the three million down to two point four million adopter. It's just levy, not the total highway budget. Twenty twenty six, we're asking for a little over two point five million, which is ninety four thousand dollars or a three point eight percent increase over this year's approved budget. And that can broken down into a number of things, kind of the big things, seventy thousand dollars in wages and benefits projected. Two hundred and ten thousand dollar requests for starting some funds for Wasika Free World Trail, which we'll talk about again in a little bit. And then also around a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to complete kind of a pavement rehab audit the fairgrounds. We started that project. Twenty twenty three, I think we build and overlay the kind of the south part and looking at doing the payment out there. Michael has confirmed, I guess, he would be looking to transfer in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of interest earnings towards our twenty twenty six equipment expense. And yes, if you do all that math, really, the remainder of the budget, all those five pages is a net reduction to levy. Total preliminary budget is just under thirteen point five million dollars. So so the eleven million is change or twelve million there is coming from county state highway, the federal grants, bridge funding, that sort of stuff. And then state aid made in this slide as well. So again, that's kind of basically first slide concludes pretty much everything we're going to talk about here, but I'll make sure you have it all. So yeah, next slide please. Okay, so order three ten, which is admin. Really fourteen thousand dollar increase, which comes down to salary, wages, benefits. Every admin. Or three twenty is our engineering and construction. We're looking at about a seven hundred thousand decrease in construction next year, which is we'll go through the numbers, but really comes down to we're doing a couple less bridges next year than we are this year. Looking at professional and technical services, kind of our consulting fees. I left that flat at one hundred and sixty, looking at next year and the year after is kind of what we might need for consultants. County construction funding, that number's been flat the last few years at zero. But about a hundred and thirty five thousand plugged into it for the fairgrounds payment. And that would be just kind of going over like a survey, seeing how that northern part of construction at six point two three million, slightly less than this year. Zero dollars levy in that, that's all local option sales tax, federal money, construction dollars. Bridge replacements, again, that's five million dollars less than this year, again, just doing a couple less bridges. Again, zero dollars levy, bridge binding or cost dollars paid for next year's structures. Object six two eight eight, the section quarter mine imitation, that is a brand new line to our proposed budget. Ever existed as a current, but it has been created for next year, hoping for some levy dollars, well, actually no levy dollars, but to to start upon to keep our section quarter mining mutation going. We've got seventy five thousand dollars in there. Michael has talked about a general fund reserve transfer in, so that would be flat, zero levy for that. I have I have a strat policy to kind of reimburse private surveyors doing work for residents within the county. Should they need to excavate or certify a corner that we don't have yet to kind of reimburse for that cost because that's been a term of fees of public cost. And things like that, again, just family emergency, I wasn't able to present that to the committee last time, so this month or next August, we'll do that. But again, that brand new line, really a zero dollar levy thing, the revenue is coming from general fund reserves. The next line, it's a preborn Wasika trail, that's also a brand new line. Didn't want to forget from when Phil and I want to say her name is Nancy, but now I forgot to commit stream from Phil's Freeborn County.
Cool, thank you, sir.
About their presentation and their approach to this board and their work down in Freeborn to extend that trail more. Really, I don't have an expense planned. If this line were to be funded, we would set up an assigned account and just start squirreling dollars away if we're when some planning or some right of way acquisition or something like that were to be needed.
You know that that Freeborn is working on getting designated a regional trail.
Yep, okay, that's anything for them to secure additional funds. So this one would be a hundred percent levy. And again, brand new line, brand new account, really. And really, again, no expense plan for next year, just just to start squirreling some money away because it is going to be a huge multi-million dollar project if it when it, you know, gets off the ground. So I just pulled that number out of thin air. I don't know if it's a good number or bad number in your guys' minds, but it's made it this far through committee and then meeting with Michael and let those slides advance up right now. I think it's probably a number that can be changed if we don't like where we're at. Yeah, again, no expense tied to it, just trying to start selling the cash to be able to have.
And I guess in my opinion is that if we do continue that trail where it comes to fruition, it's going to have to be a lot of grant money.
Oh, absolutely. So we're gonna have to have, we're gonna have to show some some county.
We'll probably have some magic or something, but yeah, I, yeah, anyway, that's.
And I think just a moment to get ready for some grant money, you're probably going to have to spend some dollars on some planting and engineering perhaps or right avoid acquisition. And again, this was, I didn't want to forget their presentation to you and start thinking long term. So that's why I recreated that line for them. I'm going to pull that out of thin air, I mean, but it's it's a multi-million dollar project.
But if we don't have something started, if we were successful in in building some broadband because we had some money set aside, earmarked for that. It shows that we got some commitment and we need to start showing some kind of small commitment to this and compared to the cost of what this thing is going to be, this is a start. And if it's certainly a few technical things, at least there's a little something.
That was the thought. Okay. Okay, so that one, I know it doesn't show up very well, but it's really our twenty twenty six construction program. C I P. And I don't know that I printed all these, but really, we got a couple bridges next year. Both of them are fourteen. Ones that are still coming, hence we've been looking for them to participate. And the previous county engineer who's now left was aware of the project, so it should be in their C I P and whoever takes, they have an interim right now, but whatever is up in his spots, I'll be talking with this winter. Kind of place a word for some coal replacements on County Road one if we find a few that need it. In anticipation of a pavement rehab project on that road in a couple of years. Seal code is in there, County Road fifteen through Tisco. Pavement rehab, County Road six, that north south one mile, that's in there for rehab. And then two federal aid, safety improvement projects for shoulder paving on Old fourteen. Ten miles from Wasiko West to New fourteen interchange. Excluding Janesville and then City of. And then County Road sixty, which lies just south of Old fourteen, is getting there and could use a millon overlay or something like that. So cut that in there as well. Think, like I said, it's just about very similar road construction budget or program as we have this year, just a couple west bridges. Okay. Next slide. Okay, this one's three thirty, which is maintenance, looking at about a four percent decrease to a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Seventy five thousand of that is in the professional and technical services. A big one here really is the seal code program. We've got penciled in at five hundred and fifty thousand. Historically, I've been paying for that with real estate tax. That fund has run dry and I need to rebuild it to be able to pay for seal code with the real estate tax again. So I'm looking at transferring in the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from my reserve account. It's about at three million dollars. The reserve account is right now. And, you know, we're accruing about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of real estate tax on an annual basis. So it'll take me three years to accrue enough to pay for one year of seal code. So if that continues, the reserve account will run dry in half dozen years or so. So one of your board agenda items today is to discuss increasing real estate tax, to kind of soften that blow a little bit and ease the bleed of our reserve account. But as for twenty twenty six, I do have that transferred in to to keep the levy roll and use some reserve dollars. I do have some hesitation with burning up our entire reserve account, just because whole construction is expensive and priorities can change and opportunities might present themselves and, you know, a couple million dollar project is pretty easy to find, really, if we needed to or wanted to. So, you know, increasing real estate tax, again, that's on the board agenda today, would help soften that blow and then long term, we should probably be having a conversation about funding things in the picture, things like that.
Go ahead. So what did it what did it cost us to seal code when it was in house?
It was very similar in cost because we still have to buy the oil and rock and and pay all the only equipment and do all of that. I don't remember, you know, it's been a few years since we did that, Matt, but I remember it was very similar. The issue is the amount of time it takes us. The guys just showed up today, they're going to be done in, you know, with good weather, two or three days. We'd be at it for weeks. About couple of weeks at least, yeah. And then that's the impact, not only to everything else we're trying to get done, but to the traveling public that see this out there, making it one or two miles a day. These guys are getting, you know, three times that or better. They have, you know, the trucks are, they have the trucks for it, all more. They have the multiple distributors, we own one, we had, we're always trying to find another one from another county or mid dot. Boulders, same thing, we're renting or borrowing those. In the back. That's your question, I think.
Yeah, okay, you know, it's it's I don't know exactly how you're because we're we're still hauling the P rock, we're still
You had in the winter, yep.
We're still doing that. So I'm just not sure how much we're already doing or how you're figuring that. I know it was, it's handy to have it higher done and they, like you say, it gets done quickly.
And they're good at it.
But but if we're going to start talking about increasing tax, then we got to look at it again, make sure we're doing it as efficiently.
And I don't disagree with you, and we always like to do in-house what we can do in-house. But I think the the model we've adapted the last few years has allowed staff to spend time doing other things at this time of the year, like cleaning up our road ditches and some of those kind of things that were long neglected because they were spending two or three weeks doing seal code. And some of that can't happen until after you've cut road ditches and those kind of things. But I think that has to be part of this conversation too, is what are we doing with that manpower then? That that wasn't getting done before, that really should be part of our normal team. I had a call about, then you've got an email about spring mortgages and what about the wild person of Sarah and those kind of things. And we we want to make sure we find that proper balance between between what we're doing in-house that really is of high value and that our folks can do better than somebody hired. I look at my house, it needs washing. Can I do it? Yeah. Am I going to do it? No, it makes no sense. It would take me the rest of the summer to do it. I can hire somebody for whatever and they'll come in, they'll do it and it will be done. And it will be done expertly as opposed to me put some around and making it four times harder than it needs to be. So I think we got to weigh all those things.
Yeah. Traffic working, holding flat rental service agreement. This was really a line that's been in the budget for, I guess, as long as I hope, but it was really some dollars in case road grader goes down and you bring that line or something like that, which, you know, can usually cost five grand or more a month to do. So I did shave that down because our equipment is getting is getting better, but you still just never know. So some dollars in there if something happens. Aggregates and P rock, I'm looking at what we've been spending in our programs for next year, say shave a few bucks there, traffic signs, believe that one flat, it's tunes material, slight reduction there as well. Read spray, left that alone and then sand and salt. We've got our bunkers are full and and we're able to to look at a reduction there. I hate to take it down too much just because then it will be in kind of a roller coaster thing and we end up with a icy winter. And it's never know. So I think the twenty thousand dollars is reasonable there, shave out of there. And again, that ends up, you know, that plus what's all on your spreadsheets in front of you, you know, adds up to around a hundred and twenty six thousand dollar decrease for the for the maintenance organization. Your equipment, what is your oldest piece of equipment that you're concerned about? Oh, well, for this, so equipment's next sheet. We'll talk about that in a second. So I got it. Next slide, there you go. Equipment a shop. So looking at about a two percent decrease in this org. Service cleaners, we've really been hammering the horseshoe stuff here on the last couple of years. So we've got some of those sort of especially doing our.
Okay, so you have a U D C there.
Yep.
Okay. Then I'm, so I talked to Dean Brad, they wanted the books. Brian Hargis says he wants a book, so I was taking this one to the counter there.
Oh, yeah, that's the one that opened yesterday.
There you go.
All right.
Little U D C books.
So I got an increase there to kind of cover our expenses. Machinery, vehicle and parts, parts have gone up. And our trend is there, some dollars there. Our gas and diesel, we haven't been spending what we've been budgeting, kind of have our six year average shown for both and kind of split the difference, I guess, a little bit, you could say, just to kind of be safe. Building improvements, so this one, again, so we are looking at our flat roof replacement of Wasika shop in twenty twenty eight, and that's over a half million dollar project. So this would be the first year of squirreling away some money to an assigned fund to pay for that. So looking at a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for that. The ten thousand dollars to make one eighty five. We're auto compliance with our fire suppression system. We're missing like a hydraulic calc plate that is now like the target of inspectors and things like that. And we do not have the original suppression system. Now first analysis computations, so to redo that is like a five thousand dollar thing and get us into compliance. The other part of it is, you know, our in Florida heat is twenty five years old. There are minor leaks somewhere in the system and we have no way to inject glycol without hiring, you know, calling Swirricks and having them come in and and so for five grand, we can get like a pump installed where we can do it on our own and not have to make that service call to keep the pressure where it's supposed to be. So that was, so that makes up those at ten thousand dollars between the roof and otherwise no other building improvements planned. Apple assets, looking at replacing the Wasika disc more. So we did two last year. So this one would be the third of four. And our one is is fairly new, so it'll be in good shape after that. And then our hydraulic hose cream machine is also going down on this and that, crimping to the right pressures and things like that. So it's it's not working out for us. So that would also be involved in the capital assets. And then vehicles, we're targeting a tandem and our panel for next year. And again, so we've got six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expense planned for those two major pieces of equipment. And and Michael was going to transfer in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from interest earnings to offset some of that expense. Yes, sir.
How often do you guys use that hydraulic press machine every day?
I don't know if it's every day, but he's he does.
Because there are a couple places in the Wasika area that do it.
Sure, yeah. And I think if it's like a specialty hose or something like that, we definitely go out, but
Right. I was sort of for, yeah, might be something to look at. The second thing was on sixty five, sixty six and sixty five, sixty seven. It would possibly be minimal, but depending on what the crew is doing, what what fuel savings, gas and diesel, do you have with not doing the seal code? I mean, that always plays in that also. And it could be very minimal, but you know, is is there good something else depending on what they're doing? If they're digging out covers or clean additions or mowing ditches. Then, you know, so you you have some offset there with that gas and diesel. And it could be minimal.
Right, yeah. I could figure that out real easy, but
Right.
Yeah, our bigger fuel programs are pushing snow and hauling gravel. For diesel, mostly gases, we're probably selling more gas than we're actually hurting. So and that's shown in the expense, but to our customers.
Right, so you have the city.
Yep. Jobs plus things like that.
Sure, sure.
Yep, yep, sure, sauce, for sure. But again, I think it kind of aligns with where we've been at the last few years of prices have stabilized. It seems like they aren't shooting out.
Yeah, all over the board. Is there any fix on the fuel island yet?
They replaced relay that might help us out with our network connection. Apparently now we were alone, we're in, somebody was talking about this problem, but now now everybody with the same unit, you know, other places who could are having the same network connection issues.
Oh.
So we'll see what kind of resolution we can get. And Chris, Chris, with that, to me, it's been heavily involved.
Yeah.
With all network stuff.
Hopefully they can get it.
Yeah, so, yep. Okay. Okay, there we go, revenues. So this is the pain for all the expenses we just talked about, right? So section quarter mine mine imitation, we'd be looking at that seventy five thousand dollar transfer in from general funds. The local option sales tax of nine hundred thousand is programmed, you know, what I've kind of got programmed to spend, not necessarily what we will make. We've been making around one point five million, but planning to spend that nine hundred thousand dollars on construction. Real estate tax again would be a rebuilding year, so zero dollars planned. Really showing zero dollars helping the budget, right? Because transferring in that eight hundred million dollars for five hundred and fifty thousand from the reserves to the sale code, so not showing even though we'll get that a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of real estate tax, I'm not showing that here because I'm not planning to spend it. So I don't want it to be a kind of a false positive for our budget. Minnesota grants, this is our bridge bridge bonds and local road improvement money that we've been awarded. One million. State aid construction, this is similar to the local option sales tax. Those are not necessarily the dollars that we are allotted, but what I'm planning to spend. So it's a true offset of the expense in the budget, three point seven million. And the state aid maintenance, this is what the allotment is anticipated to be. Get that dollars and show, you know, through our annual report that we expended those dollars. So it's just goes in to offset maintenance work on our sound loads.
So the the state aid construction, you know, we just have a rolling tally with the state, correct?
Correct.
And so we were not in debt there. We've got we're in the positive, correct? Because you can borrow against your state, you can borrow ahead of the government. Yeah, which sooner or later can just up.
Which sooner or later catches up.
We don't, we've never had to do that. We talked about it six years ago, but yeah.
If we have a huge project, there's probably no other way around funding it. Where you might have to borrow ahead. And then, and then really then there's a, at some point in time, there's a year where you have zero construction dollars and.
A chill.
Yeah.
So buying in on mortgage sooner or later. Right. Cause if you do borrow against it, is there an interest rate or is there a?
No, I think, I don't believe so. I think, again, I think you just, there's enough at the state level to, to give you your next year's allotment to spend. And then really then you're just borrowing ahead every year. You're just gonna borrow head to next year's to pay for that year's construction and sooner or later you have to. You're gonna skip a year. Yeah, you're gonna do something for a year basically to catch up.
I thought after having that discussion six years ago, and I, I remember that discussion, this doesn't sound like a very good idea.
Good long-term plan.
No, I appreciated that you've been, that you've been very consciously, as you go, helping us, helping us do this so that we're being very ambitious about. And even catching up on, on some things that needed doing, but without having to run out ahead of them, not putting the curve for the wars.
Local option sales tax, isn't it?
Yes.
And it's round, right?
It has been.
You know, we needed that million dollars of levy dollars into the construction program that just a few years ago, anyway. Kind of along with the sales tax coming on board. But if we did have, I don't know, call it a mega project or whatever, a budget buster project, I mean, I don't know. Unless you're looking at bonding or something else, you know. Borrowing ahead might be the only viable thing to do. See, but nothing on the radar for that. No. Now, which again is another reason we kind of like tappers or fun sitting around to not have to potentially borrow ahead or borrow ahead as much and it's not bad. Uh, federal grants, this is our each set money for the two shoulder paving projects. So 1.25 million dollars in grant money there. Miscellaneous revenues, that's where I'll show steel companies participation on that one bridge project. Offset the expense and then the transfer ends. Again, it's the road and bridge reserve for seal coat plus that interest earnings from Michael for the twin and you for the equipment offset. On again, we went back to the first slide that would tell you we were looking for broadly two hundred point five million dollars of levy for about thirteen and a half million. So then this couple of fairgrounds project and we'll seek a preborn trail project. It just benefits, you know, the rest of it is negative. Let me be pretty cheap. Then on that one, otherwise we'll go to solid waste. Always. So again, first slide here kind of tells the story of what we've talked about. Much smaller impacted levy compared to highway. Twenty twenty five, we have an adopted budget of a hundred thirty six thousand dollars of levy. On twenty twenty six, we're looking at a request of a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. So while the percentage is large at 23%, it's a relatively small dollar amount of thirty one thousand dollar increase over twenty twenty five. And that can be broken down really into wages and benefits. We do have a request for two new compactor bins to be replaced. That cost a fifty thousand dollars. And then we have a twenty five thousand dollar placeholder here for software and hardware upgrades to our scale software that is no longer being supported at the end of the year. So we have not pinpointed the exact package. Uh, that's best, best bid for us yet, but somewhere between ten and twenty five thousand is typically cost. So all that adds up to twenty twenty six preliminary budget, four hundred sixty three thousand dollars for solid waste. Again, a hundred sixty seven thousand dollar levy request. So next slide. All through it work by org again. So transfer stations. First one is a revenue, Minnesota grants, sort of score grant through the PCA, uh, that's eighty six thousand and change there. Uh, fees per service, a fairly large increase in revenue there just to kind of match what we've been trending. Uh, material sales, though we did hold flat just because there's so much volatility in the market. There's some legislation out there for that end product and you, we are at, it was our. Yes, thank you. So we did hold that one flat as revenue. Uh, revenues removal, this is really our cost to have our waste thought to its final destination. Comps in these, uh, voicemail has our current contract. I think that goes through twenty twenty seven. Looking at recent subsidy for that, but I think the contract has essentially a four percent increase in it every year. So that covers that. Equipment repairs and maintenance, just increase there to kind of mimic what we've been spending. A slight increase in, in bailing wire really, um, just the unveiling we've been doing. Materials cardboard, that's the rebate we give back to a couple of haulers that bring cardboard in. So that kind of that and the material sales are connected. So we sell the cardboard, but then we give a couple of, a rebate back, bring us the cardboard themselves. Browns improvements, really no project identified, just the ten thousand dollars there to kind of keep things on the up and up. Or find something we need to do. Building improvements, that security enhancements, just like pretend that's not there. I think that carried through from my presentation a year ago or so. So it was a copy, forgot to edit kind of a thing. So zero dollars penciled into building improvements. So security enhancement, no, shouldn't be there. Um, the capital assets, that's those two compactor bins. And then vehicles, nothing planned last year. This year we're about to pay later. So that's why there's much difference there.
Question? Um, uh, I do have a couple of questions, but the material sales. That's behind, but is that because of our bailer problem?
A little bit of it, we probably.
We've lost a lot of there.
We probably lost, uh, in the bailer was down, we probably lost between fifteen and twenty thousand. In sales, that, that's already taken out because the stuff we bailed for formal, we only get a processing fee for that. We don't get any other rebate that comes to us. We just take the processing fee out of it, send them. But that's taking all of that into account, you know. And what we would have gotten from our, what we sell to Liberty from highly steward and the residents, yeah, we probably lost between fifteen and twenty thousand in that amount of time. And cardboard has gone from, at the beginning of the year, it was like a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. It's down to like eighty five a ton right now. So it's very volatile. I have not done any plastic or paper yet this year. I don't have enough. I don't have enough bales right now to sell that. So there's none of that in there right now. So that'll, it'll bring it up. So it's, yes.
You're, you're carrying over some inventory in the second half of the year.
Yes, because we just don't have enough. You have to have a full truck, you know, and we have to have enough weight in order to squeeze some of that stuff out. So there will be a little bit more coming in, but like I said, that unfortunately, the cardboard market is very volatile right now.
Well, you're, you're today, we're not doing too bad. We're halfway through the year and halfway through our.
Budget.
Budget.
Right. So that part looks.
Okay.
That as a whole.
The piece for service, probably optics in the summer too, other things. So that should climb as the summer continues.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. Or ten, do we have a, a plan, maybe a three or five year plan on what we're gonna do with that bailer and now the compactor is showing some. You know, what do we have? Capital replacement on bail.
We talked about it at committee and ultimately mixed a bailer replacement in this year, in twenty twenty six's budget request. We did request some congressional discretionary funds. Haven't heard anything, not that yet, but we'll see if it can hold. But otherwise, it's, I think the current plan, the short term plan is to keep using what we've got. But yes, we should be looking at something different.
Right. They're pulling it so slightly longer, longer.
Yeah.
I mean, right now we have.
A two rail bale would be.
Yeah.
The way to go.
There's not much.
A two rail bale, it, that's what was supposed to have been put in. But because there was issues with Excel going bankrupt and they had to hurry up and find another baler to put in when the building was being rebuilt. So they went with the U R R baler instead of the Excel because they went out there, they did get bought out and our bank's up and running. But yeah, a smaller baler was put in than what wasn't reasonably intended.
We had actually put a down payment down.
Correct.
So in U R R, who are our service guys in Las Vegas? So if they travel to the world, some of the stuff, it's not easy to get them to a secret Minnesota. Excel bailers are built in Unica. Right? Or Southeast Minnesota.
Yeah.
Parts on the shelf, like related driving distance.
And if any of you ever.
Has some.
Yeah, just come out and I'm, I mean, we can, I can give you a tour of our baler, how that works. And then there's, we do have the opportunity that we go to Homestead and see an Excel, don't ram bale to fun. This will be, you can see the difference of what they do.
But I think they're around three thousand.
It's gonna be a split of the cost.
Yeah.
I was keeping three fifty.
Yeah.
Keep asking for money, looking for money, but I think it's something we need to, it's looking for. I mean, whatever, it's old, but nice to budgets. Off the top of a baler.
Right. It's not, it's, it's a big deal. In this part.
Are we okay with the tipping floor or is that conversation need to come around again?
At some point in time, it's gonna have to, I'm assuming, because I mean, it's not getting any better. And that was when the, the fire happened, none of that was replaced or fixed or redone. So at some point in time, that's gonna have to be addressed.
Okay. Think that pretty much killed that, but only a good, not a good. Yard waste one is, is flat. We were kind of, I think we're, we, I have the worst, but with, I mean, we're bringing in budgeting to sell a five thousand dollars worth of compost and everything that and screening it. We can turn it, but screening it, we have to outsource. Put that fifteen thousand dollars expense in there to continue that. It doesn't make money, but it certainly helps keep leaves and grass, kitchens and all that out of the ways and natural areas and replace it. So, and it does end up like a project that people work. Last one is the admin. So special assessments, that's, uh, that's a tax. Company taxes that's been coming into the solid waste department, land rent for the till bowl acres. And then zero dollars of transfer in. So last year we transferred in essentially all of our investment account dollars sold. The solid waste reserve dollars has, have been depleted. Pay for that border really. So there's nothing to transfer in and I guess we, you know, other than the two compactor bins, we don't, we have a large expense planned. But I guess to key on Mr. Hargis's point, I mean, if the baler really does go down, solid waste doesn't have a reserve account to help fund a new one. And then professional and technical services, again, that's that placeholder for the scale software and hardware. Then we're hoping to be able to combine a couple of different things they use. Catch register to, to the scale software, to continue even on that end of one user.
So much as that's like fifteen hundred dollars a year, that would take that away too. So I would be able to combine more of the things that we do, the catch register, the scale, hand rate, we wouldn't have handwritten tickets anymore. Our accounting would be a little bit easier there at the facility. We'd be able to combine more things and run everything off open system.
But we don't know what system yet.
I have three different options. I have that broke out where we were about to go through it about the last public. Works committee, we need, but we just haven't had time to do that yet. So.
Right. Unfortunately, they may produce and that kind of gives a lot of, you know, maybe.
How many acres do we rent up there? Seven.
Something like that. It's like three hundred ish dollars an acre, I thought, as well. We were getting.
Two, two fifty seventy nine or.
And then plus the rental order.
All the stuff total dollars.
Break your hand.
Forty, forty thousand. But that sounds like.
So that would have been.
Yeah. Seventy four, twelve four.
Seventy one.
Seventy one. That was more than that.
I can't remember. We just did it at one four.
It's Jake's. Forty three.
Oh, forty three. And it sounds like a lot.
We'll figure that number out.
I don't think it was over fourteen.
I thought it was in the upper two hundred.
I don't remember.
Like that's.
So really that's it.
So. The Michael before, I've done some of this. So there are, and you have touched on them also, the, there are some uh, places that this budget could have come down through the use of interest money or different monies. It, it looks like you're being conservative with lost dollars.
Uh, but those are, those captain is, I'm not, not a certain.
Away hot. But yeah, is there, you think you've depleted all of those possibilities if there's more money there to be in?
Well, I'm, I'm using it for my twenty twenty six construction program. So I must say add a row or something like that project, then.
Okay.
So you're. And all. Yes, you can't, between the state aid dollars and local option sales tax and then the grants, it is for the construction program and it's in therapy. Well, that's cute. Yeah. And you said that's zero levy dollars paid for construction. Okay. I think the real question is someday, you know, depending what the board does with the real respect now. I'll be, it, you know, seal coat is kind of that old liar. But you need to even say it, but seal coat on county state aid highways could be paid for with county state aid construction dollars. But it just deludes what I would consider, well, I think we should be using those style export, which is like drainage project, like real construction. Now. Preservation treatment. Then we still have to fill the county road seal coat somehow as well, which again, I've been using relish tax historically, or I have been for my four years historically. I've been using wheelage tax historically, or I have been for my four years historically.
I've got broke down these roll offs, fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, one night being roll offs, is there?
That's the two compactor bins that we have.
Yeah.
That the auger pushes into, um, I did look it up, they were purchased in two thousand thirteen, they were retrofitted in twenty nineteen to fit the new auger, it had a different door thing, the thing is, is we've, um, we were just looking at getting them replaced and we've had to have um, latches, um, rewelded, we've had to have the wheels put back on, we've had to have rails rewelded, we've had to have, we've had to do a lot of repairs of the last couple of years on them, I mean, they are from two thousand thirteen, so they're thirteen, they'll be thirteen years old next year, they've been retrofitted, they've been fixed, padded.
But I must have wrote it down because uh, Michael must have had an idea on how to fund that, not through levy, and I don't know if he was gonna try to transfer in some money, so, so that, I wish he was here, but the unfortunate conversation I had with him is um, not about the roll offs, unless maybe he was that fifty grand later, but uh, it, it's not in this
road and bridge budget, but he was talking about um, bringing in that hundred seventy five thousand dollars from somewhere else for the for the roof, to, to offset that expense.
Okay, I've got that wrote down too.
But uh, but the roll off for the bin talk would be new to me, about funding that.
Could be something.
Very well could have been, and like you say, I was kind of not around a whole lot last week, um, when some of those conversations might have been happening before I dropped.
Alright, any other questions on the budget?
Otherwise.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah.
You know each conversation.
This is in your packet as well, but uh, those hand dollars, just like the state half of wheelage and whole bunch of sales tax. And then my chicken scratching on there is what each county, um, currently collecting on those checks. There you go. So green, green uh, green county, they have a wheelage tax implemented. Who was also a wolf option sales tax, or you mentioned some of the other companies that were around, quarter cent wolf option sales tax. And. Uh, what are we selecting uh, annually now? Right around that, um, two hundred thousand, one ninety, two hundred thousand ish. So double it, if you went to twenty, so it's any for um, any dollar increment, but most are doing ten, fifteen or twenty, uh, up to twenty dollars is the max money. And it is for, you know, vehicles up in the county when they're not being used, so basically they register to a resident, we'll see how many, there are some exemptions for statute. Um, motorcycles, motorized bicycles, motors, that kind of stuff are exempt. Tax, and Willseka County did implement uh, you know, in twenty fourteen, started collecting it, passed a resolution in twenty thirteen. So the other unfortunate part about this is uh, we were gonna discuss this a little bit more at committee meeting. And this all kind of came up as budget discussion item, Michael and I, that's late June. Uh, just talking about seal codings and things like that. Asked about bringing up the conversation again about increasing wheelage tax and uh, probably the most unfortunate thing here is, if you want to implement an increase, basically have to have it to the state by August first, so we're looking at today. Make a decision for next year, and otherwise, we have a whole other year to keep talking about it. It's kind of the time comes part of it.
What's the, what do you think the theory is behind, you know, like in the cloud, blue earth, Winona? Not having a wheelage tax. Is it because they're collecting enough through that half cent local option?
I would say probably blue earth for sure, along with the, you know, pretty substantial um, castle. As well, uh, and Mankato, I'm sure, you know, and quite a bit of retail and all of that generating significant amount, Winona, I guess I don't know, more of their whole spirit, their whole philosophy to not have it. And then other states, maybe if you just don't have enough registered vehicles to, to justify it, but other counties, states.
Special?
Yeah.
We went with the fifteen percent instead of the twenty.
The fifteen dollars?
Yeah.
So that would be, and uh, roughly a hundred grand instead of a, roughly two hundred grand.
So you'd still be getting any reserves.
Oh, yeah, and even, even at the three eighty or four hundred thousand, again, it still would take then two and a half years to make enough money to give a window, so just called it, at our current current program, which is twenty to twenty two miles a year. Possibly that, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we're still gonna have to draw from somewhere. Balance. This is just, again, just eases the bleed on that reserve account. And, and I guess I don't really know where, where all we stand on where that reserve account should sit at, you know, should it be zero or three million dollars or anywhere in between, but uh, zero is scary for me, really scary.
Well, I think it should be scary for the board too, because you, you're gonna take a hit sometimes. I, I like the idea of at least of people paying the tax, no, for the money. I think people like that.
But this is kind of a user tax, you know, the more vehicles you want, the more you pay. To improve the roads, instead of spreading it out on property taxes.
Can we charge more wheelage tax on an electric car?
Don't play the ball of that.
Didn't they change it because of the weight of them? Wasn't there some legislation that went through?
They might be changing um.
Registration gas, not, not wheelage tax.
Trying to get the tax through the.
Yeah.
I mean, because they're not paying the gas tax, right?
Yes.
So gotta try to make up for that. I would like to make up for it. There's still an impact on the road. We're still a user.
Where the, what is the committee's thoughts?
Well, we did, we discussed it quite likely at the committee level. The committee, I do believe the committee recommendation would be going with twenty. Unless Mr. Commissioner Hargit has other thoughts, but going with twenty, he said, we're gonna deplete that, we're a reserve. If you go fifteen, if you don't do anything, then it's really gonna drop fast, if you go fifteen, then it's gonna be still gonna drop, twenty's gonna help us, give us some extra time to figure out where to go, I mean, where, it'll, it'll give us a couple of extra years. And those dollars are going right back into, so consumer knows it's going right back into the roads. That's, you know, so um, that would be my recommendation to go with go with the twenty up there, that gives us a little extra time, we know where the dollars are going. Um, more vehicles you have. Some more you use in your own.
That's every title licensed vehicle in Willseka County.
Yeah.
If they mail those in and not come here to our DMV, there's no money taken out at the state. That money comes directly back to us.
Twenty dollars, that's twenty dollars.
There's no. Administration, administration fee or anything like that, when we get that money for that's that. Okay. And it would be, like Jim said, you know, that three eighty area.
And if you did, if you did think about, you know, trying to do, uh, see including ourselves, then we're talking about investment too.
Equipment.
Yeah, equipment, but we're gonna be similarly efficient.
All we can talk about, you know, I, I figure we're gonna gain realistically depending what we're doing and where, where we are in the county, part takes us to get there and back and all of that. Two and a half to four hours of crew time a week, I think, is what we benefit on, or tens.
That's substantial.
Of crew time, yeah.
Yeah, a lot done in those four hours.
Yeah, overtime, yes, yeah. I mean, I don't know that it opens up three weeks, cause it, you know, it's a day every week, so.
Do you, do you feel like uh, probably getting off the subject of. Do you feel like with some of the investments we've made with skid loaders and the brush mowers and stuff that we're we are starting to get ahead of things or getting.
I don't know. I think there's always so much to do. I think everybody there is. We are so focused, um, you know, kind of like, I, I think your comments a couple of weeks ago at the board meeting about our bridge project impacting harvest, you know, our season is short, we're gonna always impact farming, uh, our season is short, and there's just like a never ending list of things to go do. You know, drainage, you know, and we, and we tend to focus and prioritize kind of rooftop out. So the things out in the ditch and the ditches themselves tend to get kicked down the road, so to speak, just because there's potholes or there's a, a failed coverter, there's, you know, something else that needs attention. I mean, we spend quite a bit of our spring, you know, just getting ready for the seal quarters to come, between the crack filling, the dirt patching, to try to smooth out bums and dips before they even show up. Um, they wanted to be here in early June and we weren't ready for it, we got just dirt patching, seal coat rolls.
I think we gotta stay with the contract on the seal coating, I, even if that's even is not what I think, it just gets done faster and more efficiently. They're ready to go, I have to worry about it, but they're breaking down, I mean, that one year, I think we fought with the the sealer for, ever, cause it just wanted to keep it out, but
and I, I wasn't first year, I think it was the first year we parked at all. But you know, just talking to Jake, you know, but one distributor the guys are sitting on set, or wait for, to fill the tanks, so they can come shoot another, you know, thousand feet of oil on the ground, and then they get to there and then we stop and wait for rock. This is, it doesn't look good probably, as well as how efficient it should get us to go do it. And these guys are doing, you know, these contractors, thousand miles a year, or whatever they're doing.
And so far, the quality's been nice.
Yeah.
Yep. You know, for sure quality, we can skip a year or two. Then that's, that's quite a bit of a.
Yeah, is there, is there a time when we could maybe not have to do twenty two miles that?
I think, um, so it's, it truly is like a preservation type um, treatment to extend the life of the pavement. Right, so you're hoping that it extends like your pavement seven to ten years, is kind of the industry accepted numbers. Anytime you decide that, you know, we just can't do it this year, those is, wait a year, do them hopefully the next year, you know, hate to see that program stop. I truly do think your richness roads have held up as good as they have because of seal coating. Cause there's no aggregate underneath most of them, you know, there's just no base. It's probably kept, kept our roads in decent shape, truly. But we're starting to change that too, we're trying to, you know, reclaim our roads and add some gravel and we get, build a base underneath them and, and that'll help it, you know, seal code is designed to keep that pavement flexible and not become brittle and it's like that all the time.
Sure.
So, short answer, yes, if we ever had to take a year off, just take a year off. Just hate to see it stop entirely.
Did check in that box cover for, well, that they need to put in, and it won't be here until September eight.
Yeah, we've got a schedule a lot for Nikki, um, they're starting right after Labor Day, which is quite a hole to dig, so that makes but probably work out perfect, you know, shoot three, four, five days of digging and it happened, then the box shows up and it's slammed in.
That's as soon as they can get in here, so.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll have more discussion on the, at the board meeting, which on the wheelage tax side is on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, if there's there's more questions, I guess happy to kind of try to answer them now as well.
I, yeah, I guess my comment would be that, much as you don't like to add taxes, I think that that's a better place for collecting money than the levy. But, you know, for that project, if we're gonna continue that, at least the people that are registering cars are paying for the road.
So, I don't know, do you think, you know, they overspent by eighteen billion dollars? Is this, so now you know where I'm going with this, is this, is this part of it that if there wouldn't have been overspending in the last year or two, that there would have been dollars for wheelage? Or these different programs, you know, that we're gonna have, the county's gotta come up with.
You're talking about increased funding on the state?
Correct.
Well, th- there's always a, a fight between where they put their, where, and where it ends up. And, and if they put it one place, it can't go another place.
You know, because they overspent, is this one of the is this one of the county penalties, basically, that the county's gonna have to pay? You know, add, cover the cost for some program that the government didn't wanna.
The state didn't fund some, some highway stuff, but not as much as they could have.
Right, right, so, yeah, even when we were at, in a, at a surplus at the state, you remember a couple of years ago, we had this surplus, there still was no, none of that surplus money funneled back to transportation, it had to get through legislation to get it into transportation.
Right.
And, and that was a fight that I remember at that time. Um, yeah, and, and now, when we're in a deficit, they're surely not gonna give more money to transportation. There's just nothing there to.
So it falls back on to, so it comes back on to, and, and.
So then it falls back on to, so it counts back on to, and, and it, it, just the overall levy pressure. The next couple of years is gonna be high for us.
Right.
So if we can. Alleviate it some, if we have to probably, like it or not.
Well, let me think this, I'm gonna get on the AMC soapbox, this is where we have an effect on that, we show up at those policy meetings and. And make sure that, that, um. That Willsey County is at the table instead of being lunch. Um, we gotta, we gotta be there, we gotta be willing to visit the host layers and, you know, work on those relationships, cause that's where we get heard. And there's lots of small rural counties that are facing similar challenges and. So, next year will be another year where we get to go do that and, and we need to put some energy there as a board, and we do. Which I appreciate.
Good. Couple things from the board, I found that contract varied, uh, it's plus or minus twelve acres. At two hundred and eighty six dollars, so thirty two zero three two is the number for the land rent.
A hundred and twelve acres?
Yeah, one or, one twelve, plus or minus whatever's planned.
Okay.
Yep.
And then how?
So one twelve. Last year was one eleven nine nine, so it's one twelve plus or minus.
So then the cost per acre is over three hundred?
No, it's two eighty six.
Okay.
Two eighty six per acre times one twelve is thirty two thousand, thirty two thousand.
That later, and then we get a heater.
And then, so then you're getting the eight thousand from the seller. Okay, I just wanted to make you aware there was forbidders on that. Uh, thank you. Danny, thanks for keeping the place clean out there. It, it is noticeable, you know, I mean, it's not down in the ditches, it's not, you know, I have more garbage. North of you, in my ditch, then, you know, it's clean down there, thank you for doing that. Do, thank you for looking for money. That's excellent, I mean, that, at the state, federal level, it helps with the surges in the roads and. Damn, thanks for the very nice article you wrote about the commissioners in the paper, if you want to often get that, but thank you for that. So, that's what I have, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, and I noticed that also, I, it'd be, when you look at the federal grants. Uh, one point two five million this next year, I just think that's a tribute to Jim's looking for money and all of that.
Yes, sir. It's not, I mean, those are safety dollars for shoulder paving projects, which. Guys are supporting, um, and they do have a match requirement, you know, and we're using some of our construction dollars, not levy dollar. Twenty dollars for, for getting those jobs. Yep. It'd be nice, like five is, uh, done, that's full payment on that from year. Road nineteen. So we're looking to continue that next year. And we're grinding on, uh, concrete roads for the wet reflective pavement markings right now as well, so that's another federal project for this year.
Do you annually, uh, run a recovery on all our gravel roads to get the shoulders up?
It's usually a spring operation.
You try to run over every acre or every road mile?
Yes, they do, yep, we have two retrievers, so the templates are out in the spring, pulling all that back. And then we do it on gravel shoulders on the favorable roads as well, retrieving them.
Yeah. It, it just seems like. Uh, and, and I think this is well known, isn't it, that the gra- the gravel we get now just doesn't have quite as much blinder, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, it could be. Just a gravel hole here, but, um, yeah, it is getting more and, so less blinder, absolutely, to the point where. We're sort of, the expense is much higher, but, you know, do we start talking about crushed rock? Sort of, or somewhere, and, uh, away from gravel, just because others, it's just all rolling around. But trucking it here is, is inexpensive and.
And it'll show expense, is that harder to bleed?
It can be, um, yeah, cause it'll bind up and back in. Again, once the moisture, you know, you can cut it.
So you gotta get out here in the first twenty four hours.
Okay, but, you know, so, you know, there's more expense in producing it, it's forty rock, that's gotta be last been crushed in versus ground water. They burn it through, crop the river like in less than ten percent of our squash or something.
I'm gonna turn the conversation again, only because I had a constituent query not too long ago. About almost getting hit at the corner of, um, three and two. A couple of weeks ago, and we've talked about that corner and safety and the fact that people don't always stop and, and, uh.
Even with the flashing lights or signings.
Um, apparently it was, it, well, by now it would be three weeks ago, they said if, if the kid would have been driving, they might have been dead. But he was driving, so he looked and, you know.
But.
And this is.
Nobody knew if he was on three or two.
He was on three. He was on three and, and.
That's a stop.
No, no, three's one, oh, three's not a stop, it was a stop.
It was a stop.
Well, the two person did stop.
Correct, correct, and so, and this is, this is one guy that I usually hear from that is. Pay too much taxes, pay too much taxes, pay too much taxes, and his suggestion must be put in big. So, I went, do you know what that costs? And he said, I don't care.
Yeah.
He was like, well, I don't know how we're gonna do that, but.
Kinda already started that, not to build a roundabout, but to go through some engineering analysis, um. I studied that intersection and determined if roundabout is meets warrants and justification, and once we have the report. Uh, which I've hired Stonework to do that. Uh, they haven't started it yet because three is closed and I wanna restore traffic to, yeah, we, we get them going, but the small issue. Should do that, we've set up cameras and do some analytics, analyze the intersection and do some preliminary geometrics and all that. And get a roundabout justification report.
Okay.
And one, and depending on that, I think that would be a huge tool in seeking some more federal type of safety from the dollars. And potentially build that roundabout.
Awesome, cause I know the, and I told him, I said, we, we've had the discussion on the board that is the, is the roundabout the answer? I said, we're, we're not, we don't have the information we need to figure it out, but thank you for.
Yeah.
For continuing to look at that.
I know, it's the answer.
Yeah, because it is a, it is a. It's a problem, and it's a problem where even people who are very fiscally conservative. Have enough concern that they say we should fix this, no matter what it costs, and that's always relative.
And I think part of it, we should have the sheriff, you know, this guy said all their, you know, enforcement, that's when you kind of just kind of. You can sit down at that top hall, watch both intersection completely, be able to control that intersection, or at least make, with the colors on.
Yes.
But, what did you say, what engineering? Stonework. Um. Of, you know, there is accident history at intersections, um. But really, what we hear a lot of are the near misses, which. You know, undocumented or reported, other than who were involved, so it makes it a little more challenging to.
Or we've, or we've stopped it both ways.
I think you'll have more accidents, cause then they're all expecting every corner to turn, to stop, yeah.
What do you think, this is just like people just blowing the stop sign saying, I'm not gonna get hit because there's not gonna be a car there?
There's not much stress, it's just, they try to look and go. I think the others failing to, gets caught in your corner, looking to go or pick a bad gap or just. I don't, I mean, I haven't really experienced it personally, but I'm not driving it every day.
Shut up, seven thirty.
I don't think so, because what happens is you're, you'll have more accidents the first couple of months, because people are used to three. You like that.
Want to pass them down here, you have a design home, school that.
They've got that four way stop, you know, by the list or church.
Yeah.
And if you wanna collect deputy's salary, just have them sit out there.
They're hungry, anybody that stops either way. If any, the problem is any tickets at the deputies, right? We get no money, the county gets no money, almost the state.
And not true.
It comes back to the.
Well, I have the townships, I take that.
Certain percentage is going back. So, we'll see, you know, we'll go through this, um, go through the study.
Sure, that study, yeah. Yeah, no, I'm glad, I'm glad to see where it all's at, it's good to know that that's happening. Okay, if there's, is there any other questions, otherwise we'll adjourn the work session. Yeah, about nine minutes here. Google call, well, we have Secret Economic Department, Commissioner is meeting. Everyone would like to silence their cell phones instead. The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for being here this morning. You will get started with public count. Anybody here for public count? Public count, nothing online, I would presume. Mr. And we would move on to approval of the agenda. If everybody's okay with it, I'm going to change number eleven to to be to lunch. Since the Tasty House is closed the month of July, please. Anything else, Commissioner? No. No, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Crowson.
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Walter.
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Then I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Make that motion.
Second by Crowson.
The second to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. She carries. Then we would go to the minutes. We have June third minutes and June seventeenth. Work session. Is that a chance to look them over and have no corrections, I would look for a motion to approve that as a slate.
I would make that motion, Chair, Walter.
The second, second part. Second to approve the minutes as slate. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. She carries. Consent agenda. We have approval of the bills. Transfer of some reinvestment grant dollars from South Country Health Alliance. Notification of Confession of Judgment. Opioid Settlement Fund Quarterly Transfer. Court Services Director Out of State Travel. Amended Collaborative Coordinator Service Agreement. Approval of first half tax abatement payments. June twenty, twenty twenty-five Monthly Electronic Funds Transfer Report. Pretty big consent list there this month. For this evening. Are any other, any discussion on those items?
Chair, I mean, consent agenda, discussion.
Okay, is there a second?
Run for second.
The second is in our end row, balance, Sarah, is that reinvestment grant transfer? How much of that is left, or is that?
We've got lots left, apparently.
Okay, you're just transferring that in as you use?
As we use it, correct. Yeah.
Discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. Van Shell Courthouse Park. Brian.
Morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So, uh, I at Courthouse Park. Looking at investing in and installing a van shell. Where the existing playground equipment is and future equipment could possibly, that equipment could possibly be reused, or we are looking into possibly upgrading and getting some more ADA equipment. For the playgrounds, we do have another location for that at Courthouse Park. And with the intent of improving our historical Courthouse Park and drawing more interest to Waseca, the van shell could be used for multiple functions, including weddings, concerts, and including school bands. So on, for anybody that wants to play music during the summer, of course. And that would be a, a free use for that van shell, we would not have a charge for that. Um, we discussed this project with the building committee. And it was recommended bringing it to the board for approval. Um, the facility's recommendation would be that the Waseca County Board of Commissioners to approve the purchase and installation of a van shell at Courthouse Park for an estimated cost of one hundred and forty-three, eight sixty-nine, fifty-four. And that includes the concrete and electrical work. I do believe it'll be a little bit cheaper due to the fact that the electrical will not have to be ran as far from Excel, it'll be a shorter distance. So I'm anticipating that number to be a little bit less. As for physical FTE impacts, it'd be paid for assigned interest earnings from twenty twenty-four, so there'll be no levy implications on this project.
With that, open up the questions. Sir, some of the questions were, Brian.
Sure. Our interest earnings, is that just over our bottoms and stuff that we've had? Investments that we've had over the years, is that what that money is?
I believe so, yes.
So when you say no levy implication, I mean, that, that interest earnings can be used anywhere, correct?
Correct.
So it can have levy implications because we
we're using that levy.
Could offset levy with it.
We could offset levy with it.
I see.
That, that was my concern about where that money could be utilized someplace else, just not knowing our next year's budget as we go through and what we're going to be implicated with, I'm just concerned. I mean, hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, just that could be utilized someplace else. That's, I, I like the idea, I just don't know if this is the right time.
Michael was involved in this, you know, discussion.
I, I understand, I, I just, I, I think just knowing that projecting for next year, I'm just kind of looking ahead for that.
I would, I would weigh in as, as a person on the building committee, and one of the reasons this has come in before us now is to explore what board interest is on, on this, we have made some pretty significant investments in Courthouse Park. And as a board have kind of decided that Courthouse Park is is kind of our jewel of a park, and we want, we want to purposely make improvements out there that draw more people to it, that draw more people to the county who, who don't, who might not have another reason to come here. Um, the disc golf course was one of those investments, the new shelter out there is part of it. Um, this idea was brought forth um as, and, and maybe the timing is right, or it isn't right, but the idea that, that this would draw folks out on a more regular basis, as somebody who's, who now lives in town, in Janesville. Janesville had some community in, in, in a small van shell performing area in Veterans Memorial Park, and, and I will tell you now twice a month, they get all kinds of people down there for music in the park, and now they're doing a, a farmer's market there at the same time, and they're, it that kind of, that kind of building or function allows you to draw people in. Um, whether this is the right time to do that for Waseca County or not, that's something, you know, that will be a communal decision of this board. Um, but as we were having the discussion and looking at the layout out there and, and any discussion on the park and how we could make that better. Um, it became real obvious that that where we have the playground equipment probably isn't the best place to have playground equipment. And that we need, we need to make that playground equipment more accessible, one way or another. And, um, and the proposed location would allow folks to set up chairs on the, in the parking lot, on the asphalt, you'd be able to hear and see that from the, from the from the shelter. Um, now might not be the time, but it might be, so I, I appreciate your thoughts on it. Uh, but, but I urge us as a board to look at how we can systematically continue to make improvements out there to, to make make sure that that very large, beautiful county park that we, that we are doing things that will attract people to come out there and use the place, and even people from outside our county, because that's, it's great for public health. It, it's great for families in recreation. So those were the discussions we had at, at building committee, and Kusner Hargit can add to that discussion.
I'd like to, so with the relocation of the, so if the van shell goes where the playground equipment is. Right now, if you have families that are in the new pavilion and you have a lot of kids are going to the playground equipment that's existing right now where it's at. You're going to cross the parking lot to get to the playground. By removing that, putting the van shell there and replacing the playground equipment, which would be directly east and south of the new pavilion, that would have an easier ADA accessibility, and you'd have a bird's eye view of your kids basically without any visual obstructions to that playground equipment. And it would be newer into the so-called recreation area where we have our beanbags and all that.
Thank you. Um, I think also, uh, there's been recent inquiries about hosting musical events out at the Courthouse Park. And I will tell you that having a van shell, besides providing an opportunity for that musical event, but it projects the sound of the music in a certain direction, so that it doesn't necessarily disturb whatever's behind it, right? So it, it presents that very interference that some people might perceive that a musical event might happen. And, and so by providing a, a shell, particular climb shell, the gazebo look, which is beautiful, by the way. It does, Commissioner Walter, you are spot on on the economic development impact of having a place that's available that then becomes more appealing to, to interact at the park. So I just want to say that it's been my experience from economic development and community development part, that when you do decide to do something like this, it's definitely going to have indirect impacts that maybe you're not aware of right now. And so if this isn't the time for you, I definitely would appreciate you having it on your radar, because I think it brings, I think it brings benefit to the park and to the key.
Yeah. Okay. What do you have, is there anything budgeted for new equipment out there?
For playground equipment?
Yeah, sorry, playground equipment.
It would be a, a grant funded playground, which is almost a guarantee, I believe it's like a fifty-fifty, but it's almost a guarantee from Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground, if it's grant funded or as to when the new equipment would go. It, I don't know yet, you know, that would have to be discussed and, and put into the budget at some point in time for the new playground equipment.
I just think they're getting more use out of the playground equipment than that shell at least in my mind. And I, I'm not saying that it wouldn't be used, I'm just thinking playgrounds would be a better investment.
Well, that's cool, regardless.
Regardless, that's a good idea.
Oh, okay.
Well, that, that we're, well, I should say that we're working on, actually, to move, to make an ADA compliant and move it closer to the pavilion. We don't think that's going to pull out the old stuff.
If we don't have new equipment coming.
Then the playground would remain there unless we get a grant funded opportunity to put in the new grade again.
So you won't reuse that much.
We're going to try and take it out and reuse some, but it's, it'll get recreated. So it can be removed and replaced by Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground, which I did get a quote on. Uh, to have that actually removed, they can do it versus us doing it and damaging the, the equipment itself. So the question is, do we pay them to do that and move it to the new area and then add to that with other ADA equipment or single stage pieces of equipment? Or do we utilize that in a different area of the park, back by the campgrounds? It's, it's in the discussion, you know, for kids that are camping and get a whole new system up there by the main pavilion, which would be grant funded then. We moved, taking apart, removing it and putting it back is not a grand, grand, grant funded.
And that's not in that hundred and forty-three thousand?
No. For the pavilion? No. So if this is approved.
And so that would be added cost to get the playground equipment moved and reset.
Correct.
What was your, what was your quote on that?
Uh, the playground, twenty-three, twenty-five thousand. That did not include the safety material that would go. Uh, the rubber safety ground or smooth. That was roughly around fifty, I believe.
Fifty?
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's basically sixty, area we're working at, looking at is sixty to sixty-five feet by thirty or thirty-five feet. For the new, new or existing playground, that's the existing one that we have right now. Area.
Okay. Brian, maybe give a rundown on all, everything that we've put in since the first cabin, I mean, we've done the other two cabins, and now we did some restrooms out in the park further than up at the main.
Correct.
Dump station was yesterday.
Yeah, it's not quite completed yet, then you're eighty percent completed there.
You have the drinking mountains out by the cabins that are pet friendly.
Yep, hydration stations, also we have laid paths back on campsites eight through twelve with thirty amp, fifty amp hookups, plus a regular water spigot that can be used to uh, which is As in, and maybe the timing is right or it isn't right, but the idea that that this would draw folks out on a more regular basis. As somebody who's who now lives in town, Jamesville, Jamesville had some community in in a small band show performing area in Veterans Memorial Park. And and I will tell you. Now, twice a month, they get all kinds of people down there. For music in the park and now they're doing a a farmer's market there at the same time and they're that kind of that kind of building or function allows you to draw people in. Whether this is the right time to do that for Will Seagull County or not, that's something, you know, that will be a communal decision of this board. But as we were having the discussion and looking at the layout out there and and any discussion on the park and how we could make that better. It became real obvious that that where we have the playground equipment probably isn't the best place to have playground equipment. And that we need, we need to make that playground equipment more accessible, one way or another. And and the proposed location would allow folks to set up chairs on the in the parking lot on the asphalt, you'd be able to hear and see that from the from the from the shelter. Now might not be the time. But it might be. So I I appreciate your thoughts on it. But but I urge us as a board to look at how we can systematically continue to make improvements out there to to make make sure that that very large, beautiful county park that we that we are doing things that will attract people to come out there and use the place and even people from outside our county, because that's it's great for public health. It it's great for families in recreation. So those were the discussions we had at at Building Committee and Kusner Hargit can add to that discussion.
I'd like to, so with the relocation of the, so if the band show goes where the playground equipment is. Right now, if you have families that are in the new pavilion and you have a lot of kids are going to the playground equipment that's existing right now where it's at. You're going to cross the parking lot to get to the playground. By removing that, putting the band show there and replacing the playground equipment, which would be directly east and south of the new pavilion, that would have an easier ADA accessibility and you'd have a bird's eye view of your kids basically without any visual obstructions to that playground equipment. And it would be more into the so-called recreation area where we have our beanbags and
Thank you. And I think also there's been recent inquiries about hosting musical events out at the courthouse park. And I will tell you that having a band show besides providing an opportunity for that musical event, but it projects the sound of the music in a certain direction so that it doesn't necessarily disturb whatever's behind it, right? So it it presents that very interference that some people might perceive that a musical event might happen. And so by providing a a shell, particular climb shell, the gazebo look, which is beautiful, by the way, it does, Commissioner Malter, you are spot on on the economic development impact of having a place that's available that then becomes more appealing to to interact at the park. So I just want to say that it's been my experience from economic development and community development part that when you do decide to do something like this, it's definitely going to have indirect impacts that maybe you're not aware of right now. And so if this isn't the time for you, I definitely would appreciate you having it on your radar because I think it brings, I think it brings benefit to the park and to the key.
What do you have? Is there anything budgeted for new equipment out there?
For playground equipment?
Yeah, sorry, playground equipment.
It would be a a grant funded playground, which is almost a guarantee. I believe it's like a fifty fifty, but it's almost a guarantee from Minnesota, Wisconsin playground if it's grant funded or as to when the new equipment would go. I don't know yet, you know, that would have to be discussed and and put into the budget at some point in time for the playground equipment.
I just think they're getting more use out of the playground equipment than that show at least in my mind. And I I'm not saying that it wouldn't be used, I'm just thinking playground would be a better investment.
Well, that's cool.
Regardless, that's okay. Oh, okay.
Well, that that we're, well, I should say that we're working on to move, to make an ADA compliant and move it closer to the pavilion. We don't think that's allowed to old stuff.
If we don't have new equipment coming.
Then the playground would remain there unless we get a grant funded opportunity to put in the new grade again.
So you won't reuse that much.
We're gonna try and take it out and reuse some, but it's it'll get recreated. So it can be removed and replaced by Minnesota, Wisconsin playground, which I did get a quote on to have that actually removed. They can do it versus us doing it and damaging the the equipment itself. So the question is, do we pay them to do that and move it to the new area and then add to that with other ADA equipment or single stage pieces of equipment? Or do we utilize that in a different area of the park? Back by the campgrounds? It's it's in discussion, you know, for kids that are camping and get a whole new system up there by the main pavilion, which would be grant funded then. We moved, taking apart, removing it and putting it back is not a grant, grant, grant funded.
That's not in that hundred and forty three thousand?
No. For the pavilion? No. So if this is approved.
Then, so that would be added cost to get the playground equipment moved and reset.
Correct.
What was your, what was your quote on that?
Uh, the ground twenty three, twenty five thousand. That did not include the safety material that would go. The rubber safety ground or smooth. That was roughly around fifty, I believe. Yeah, so it's a, it's basically sixty area we're working at, looking at is sixty to sixty five feet by thirty or thirty five feet. For the new, new or existing playground. That's the existing one that we have right now. Area. Brian, maybe give a rundown on all, everything that we've put in since the first cabin. I mean, we've done the other two cabins and now we did some restrooms out in the park further than up at the vein.
Correct.
Dump station was yesterday.
Yeah, it's not quite completed yet. There are eighty percent completed there.
You have the drinking mountains out by the cabins that are pet friendly. Yep, hydration stations. Also, we have laid paths back on campsite eight through twelve with thirty amp, fifty amp hookups. Plus a regular water spigot that can be used to which is potable that could be used and put in the camper back there. Dump station will not be potable water, of course. So we, plus the two cabins out there that are we ran electric and everything to them. They were one size smaller than the initial big one we got, but they're, they're being used. They're, we got, I think he spoke already this Thursday. So we have had campers, you know, actual camper, campers come in already. We invested in the new shed up there. That was last year, the year before? Last year. Yep. So the old pavilion has to come down. And now we're talking about the actual caretaker's house being removed out of there. Yep.
And is there plans for that little pavilion to come down yet?
Actually, three. It'll be removed free.
At when?
It really depends upon.
On what we do today.
Yeah. And then the, uh, once that pavilion is down or taken off, I plan on doing an overlay. Uh, and then moving the gaga ball pit to where that foundation is, the foundation is good enough to leave there to set the gaga ball pit on. And then where the gaga ball pit is right now is the existing basketball court. We're gonna turn that back into the half basketball court with an overlay over top.
Okay, glad. The only reason I ask for that is there's a wedding there in September.
Yeah, that's my daughter.
So he's pretty aware.
Oh, there's another.
There's another on there?
Yeah.
Oh, shoot. Or maybe hers is October. I don't know. I've heard it.
I have, I have appreciated having these discussions about the park. Whether we, whether we decide that the band show, that now is the right time for the band show or not. I think some of these other improvements and moving things around, getting started on that as we have made incremental progress going along make perfect sense. As soon as we thought after visual, you know, the layout up there and we were looking at where things might go. And with the new, and I don't spend a ton of time out there. But as soon as we looked at the, at the area of it, it's like that playground is absolutely in the wrong spot. Playground's getting used by little kids. And if people are setting up in that, in our new pavilion, they don't want their little kids walking across the parking lot to go play to go play on on playground equipment. That stuff is, it's meant for smaller, smaller kids and and you want them to be close. It makes sense that basketball hoop, that's usually something for a little bit older in age. The gaga pit, getting that a little closer over, getting those recreational things all in one spot on the same side of the lot as, as the pavilion, pavilion makes sense safety wise as well as convenience wise and supervision wise for parents and other folks. Grandmas and grandpas watching, watching littles out there. And and we do need to think about how we accommodate folks who who need more accessibility out there. Even if we just move the current playground equipment over and add some individual pieces that are, that are accessibility pieces for folks who who are differently abled. It would make a huge difference out there. Otherwise, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make this great family friendly park where not everybody in the family has anything to do.
Um, the existing equipment right now, I went back and looked, has four or five ADA compliance aspects of it. So, which we have to have when we installed it ten years ago. I just remember the installation, we did it ourselves. It was not fun, but we had our help. And then we did add that new community fire pit out there, which really, really looks nice to the south of the pavilion. It's kind of a long route. I do believe this band show would be a great addition and I do believe it would be a huge especially with now, you know, we've had one music fest out there, you know, already, which went really well. Really no altercations that I heard of from the sheriff's department. They're confined, like when they needed to leave. It went well, went better than I thought it would.
Um, just one other comment I want to bring up. I've been approached by a couple of other individuals, a concern about courthouse park not having its wilderness anymore as well.
That's nice.
That was, that was one of the other couple of things, a couple of people approached me on that was wanted to make the board aware that people are watching what's happening. Those are their concerns. I'm not saying it's everybody.
Well, it's a few people. And that's, that's the points I wanted to bring up too, is that I think we have to be concerned about how much we're changing the look of the park. You know, people will usually will visit there to for a wilderness experience. You know, I had questions on that playground equipment. You've kind of alleviated that, that there's still gonna be playground equipment, just in a different spot. But I, I have concerns about, is that the right place for a band show? It, it's, it's only hard for camping. We've been a lot of changing, a lot of improvements. I have concerns about if there's a musical going on every weekend, if it gets that popular. Is that deterring the campers, the ones that just wanna be out there tenting? We've already made it a little more difficult to force equine. And I've, I've, I've heard concerns about that from the equine people. And I, I just, you know, traffic is good, but I just have concerns about if there's music going on out there every weekend. Who's not coming out there because of that?
I believe the wilderness is still there, you know, because we didn't really do the whole. There's still a whole lot on southern that, actually, it's everywhere other than the disalp where you walk. The horse trailers are still there.
But the access in there isn't as simple as it used to be.
I guess.
I don't know where the complaints are coming from then.
Yeah, I mean, so the access and everything that that was there is still there for the horse trailers. We still have the tie down out in the main area. We have tie downs back on campsite twelve because we had horseback riders that camp out there. We never took any of that stuff down. As for driving out, we left in that expanded parking, we left an open area where they could just drive right out and back onto the road when they exit.
The thing, some of that is perception of people, what they see.
Just the traffic, getting mainly.
I think that, that plays a factor. And I know that the wilderness and everything kind of still in the same area, but there's expansions. You know, everybody sees an expansion. I'm just worried that the silence is gone.
In parts of the park.
In parts of the park. I'm, I'm sensing that we don't have a real strong consensus on, on moving forward with the pavilion at this point. I, and this discussion is interesting because we had some of the same discussions in our building committee meeting as far as accessibility for some of the different constituencies that that use the park, folks that are, that wanna ride horse out there. And some of those other things. Maybe at some point when we get a little further down the line in our budgeting and we feel like we're caught up, maybe a board work session on, on the park to take that thirty thousand foot view by the whole board might be helpful. And I, I would urge that we, that we include our economic development people and our public health people. And certainly our law enforcement people in that conversation to help us get some a high level philosophy about where we, where we should be going with that, what anytime you change, there's gonna be some people that are unhappy with change regardless. And that's okay, but, but I'm just suggesting that might be a way to go to help us set out some, a more linear bunch of goals for the park instead of feeling like we're taking a little piece here and a little piece here and a little piece here.
Well, this, uh, the discussion of not changing things here at this time or think about it, do you change it or not? Has me a little worried and skeptical about where that house is existing as to what to be discussed putting there.
I think that should be part of that, that whole board work session discussion, because I, I think we need to look at the park as a whole. We are, we have had discussion just recently on a number of different moving pieces out there. We all know this is budgeting season and maybe we know we anticipate some, some effects from both the state budget and the federal budget, how that's gonna affect us locally. So I, I think some of those big philosophical decisions that also you know, you have the map in front of you while you're doing it can be helpful.
I guess as far as I'm concerned, I'm not necessarily opposed, but I don't think I could say yes today. I, I just, this came off a little quicker than I, I didn't see this in the radar. And I'd like to have more discussion. I'd like to see a better layout, however things could sit. What's, what's, you know, in your mind, how you have planned out before I say yes to this. And the budgetary things play a big factor.
Price will go up.
It will. I understand. Everything, everything does.
It's saying it will increase. The, yeah, it's, it's quite a bit of money for a band show. The, you know, some of it was self inflicted because of where we put our new building. You know, the, the old, the old one, all they had, kids had to do was run back and forth across the grass to get to the plain area. Now it's across the tar, where you have people turning around or parking or what have you. You don't, you don't want kids running through there. Whether or not this pass is today, I would still say that we need to move that playground equipment for a safety issue regardless. Because, you know, you just don't know if someone's getting injured out there at this point. So the, you know, I would say to move the playground equipment and remove that old pavilion, maybe not the concrete yet, in case it's something we need that's under that pavilion.
Well, and we're gonna keep that and put the backup pit over there.
Right.
Yeah.
But I, with the placement of it, and I know we don't have a rendering we can put up on the screen today of what it would look like. That's just a couple couple of things that I'm thinking of at this point.
I like the idea of getting the equipment, the playground equipment taken care of.
Yes.
I like that idea. I really do. I just, the band show is just off and sell right now.
And if you were gonna, if you were going to remove that and get new playground equipment, where would where would you put that other stuff out back? Where would you put another playground out by the in the large area, the seven through ten or twelve or whatever? We really haven't spoke to all yet. So, but there could be a piece there, there could be a, another piece between five and six. Yeah. You know. Well, you hate to, this is. They're not attached. We hate to take that old stuff out. Yep. Put it by the new pavilion, add to it, and then find out that we're gonna get brand new equipment that's a lot nicer and put that out in the woods away from the pavilion. That's just not forward thinking.
Would you want it out? Too far away anyway, because you, you wanted the playground equipment pretty accessible to the pavilion.
That would be the first step. If we use the old stuff and went out by the cabins or wherever that he's saying to put up a second playground for people who are camping. It sounds not good for them. I think we better think this through.
So it's on the, it's an action item. We have to either we can table it to we simply table it, it comes back at the next meeting, but we can table it to an unknown time, right?
If we table it, it has to come out the next week.
And Laura, I want you to set a date for it.
Yeah, set a date, I think.
I would.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion to table this not to the next meeting, but the meeting after, so that we can kind of regroup with, with more immediacy on moving playground equipment. Partly because that's the safety issue. And, and having some, some thought and then having some numbers associated with what would it cost towards new playground equipment up by the pavilion? Move our, our existing playground equipment to a couple of other spots to make a small activity place out where the camping is for families who, who are further away from the pavilion. And just get some idea of what that might look like. We, and I think it would help the board as a whole to have a map in front of us when we have that discussion. It would help me a ton, because I don't know the park as well, some of you guys do.
So it's a really long motion.
Uh, yes, it was. I'm gonna move that we table this not to our next meeting, but the meeting after.
Second meeting in August.
Yes.
It'll be August nineteenth.
Okay. I'll start with Commissioner.
Thank you.
So I had to table this action item, band show, courthouse park to August nineteenth. Is there any other discussion?
I think we would also include with Brian, the numbers to remove the removal of the other pavilion. And maybe just the whole capital improvements line on what, what our vision is for that.
I don't know if buildings and grounds is scheduled for a budget work session at all.
I thought I had my budget meeting, but I haven't been called in for a work session.
Okay.
I think it's this.
Yeah, I just, that, I just saw we could tie it down together if.
Is that adequate time? That's all they do today is. Is that adequate time? Do you come up with a more robust put together by when?
August, August nineteenth.
Yeah, I was just gonna throw out there that we're kind of on a time crunch now as for getting, I think it's eight to nine weeks right now just for getting material for the band show. So the more, I, I don't know if it'll get built this year
Right.
versus next year. So it's kind of a time crunch, because there's certain pieces that you need for the concrete work before For the concrete work before. Pavilion or, excuse me, van shell can go off and need to be added to the concrete for some coverage and everything.
Yeah.
But nineteen is fine.
Even as the nineteenth comes and goes, depending on what happens there. Once Labor Day rolls around. We've got till next spring. You know what I'm saying? This isn't going to be anything that's going to get done before Labor Day. So we're still talking about next spring. But at least we can keep this on the radar.
Alright.
Yeah. We can share.
No, I won't be with the nineteen. I can. And that's. Was tied, did I miss the thread? Was there a work session before that? Work session?
No, and the. Yeah, forget that comment. I was just, if if you were scheduled for a budget work session, then we could. Tie that all together and talk about it some more, but.
Okay, so just bring this to the board on the nineteen.
Just plan on bringing it to the board on the nineteen.
Okay, I still haven't asked a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. She cares. Thanks, Brian. Now. Now you're up again. HVAC.
Yeah, summary, uh, basically, right now, this is to uh incorporate new rooftop units. At Community Services Building. Uh, putting in V A B. Uh, units uh. Throughout the building that were previously tore out back when Brown was in there. Um. So V A B is variable air volume, help to control climate control in different areas. Uh, of the building. So when the building was purchased and remodeled in two thousand nineteen slash twenty twenty, the rooftop units were put on hold, got back on costs. These units were installed around two thousand ten. Uh, the existing units on the roof are fighting with the new units that were installed in the basement at the time of the remodel. Making it hard to control the heat and cooling on the upper two floors. Uh, when the building was being rented out prior to the purchase, materials were removed from the existing HVAC, which I was talking about, the V A Bs. And so on to separate heat costs from the whole building. Uh, so to control that variable air volume is very, very hard with the new system that we got. So the new system that would be going in would be incorporated with U H L. Which is the existing. Uh. System that we have now that is controlled via computer or. Going down there hands on basically to control your variable air volume. Um, this would incorporate. All floors then could be on that system as well. Also includes occupancy sensors on the first floor. For. Uh, when the building is occupied and not occupied. Which is a a energy efficient saving cost. Um, again, it was discussed with the building committee and suggested bringing to the board. At this time. So. Facilities recommendation would be for the Board of Commissioners to approve the replacement of rooftop H P A C. And oc sensors at Community Services Building for estimated total cost of three forty-five, one fifteen. Um. Explanation of physical F P E interacts. Paid for with assigned interest earnings for point two four. All of the application.
Good. Ryan, this solves all our heating cooling issues, so Sarah isn't having to bring a blanket in. Worse than otherwise. I'll make a motion that we.
I'll second.
I'm second to uh. Approve the replacement of the HVAC. And O C C sensors of the Community Service Building. Is there any other discussion? It's all good. Um. So. They were put in in two thousand ten. Correct?
Correct, when I believe they replaced the roof on there when uh. Brown took over the upper two floor, upper two floors, they had paid for some money. They like split the cost with the owner and removed some things that were in there. Okay. But the V A V aspect of it that was in there existing had gotten poor out. Otherwise, it was going to tie in with the other. Uh. Business that was in there, they could split the cost. Correctly. Is the explanation that I got back. Yeah.
So do you know what the expected life? Of like a roof unit like that is? And is there any value in that?
I.
That we're taking on?
It really depends upon the the unit itself. I mean, as to what you purchase. These are. Uh, these units that we're going up there are. Probably one of the. One of the best. That you can get out there. Can you get cheaper? Yes. But for long lasting. Units that are up there. No idea what it. What the estimated time would be in twelve, thirteen years.
That, you know, that's, they're fifteen now or so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's that was what I was wondering is if there. If there's still a lot of life in them, but you're just not working in our system or if they're, they are.
Actually, the units that are on the roof existing now, it hasn't nickel dined us over the past few years.
Yeah, no, I know we've got issues with them all along.
Sure, if I might jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but it seems to me that um. That when we did that remodel. And decided to leave them up there. If. Um, I know that there was discussion about whether we should leave them up there or not. And it. And it seemed to me that that. That. The discussion at that time was max and we'd get out of almost ten years. And that was kind of a maximum number of what we were going to get out of those. Particular units and and that was five years ago. Um. I was pretty impressed with the with the energy savings we're going to get by putting, by doing this V A V system and making it work the way it's supposed to. Um. And one of my questions at building committee about this was, well, what about the basement and if? This workforce development center goes in there. This is part of getting the building ready to be able to to. How the the basement might be controlled in a way that it also needs to be. Needs to work.
Those docked in the basement.
Yeah.
Or if we needed, if we built anything down there. That was just planned from the beginning. Uh, that I wanted done, and that did go through. So there might be a couple, you know, drops that we have to put in, but it was. All put in with the new system in the basement. The upper two floors, we ran the heat around the outside edge. Because we didn't have the new U H L system up there. Any other questions? On that part?
All right. Um, I will ask the question then. Uh. It was move to. Go ahead with this replacement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. She cares. You done with you now, Brian?
I love you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we've got Sarah.
Before we start, I'd just like to thank Brian and his group for working with that system. Trying to figure it out for us. It's been a challenge every spring and every fall. To get things rebalanced and they've been trying to just like um engaged in as much as they can. Do with the building as it exists, so. Appreciate their support.
All right, so I am here um with a a request. And the South Central Regional Interconnect Joint Powers Board met. Uh, the funding. From the Minnesota Department of Health. And the related assigned duties that in fact has been um operating under for, I guess, I'm not sure how many years, many years. Um, is um moving back to the state. Um, and therefore, um, the board itself met and agreed. Uh, that, excuse me, that termination of agreement wasn't in the best interest of the counties. I wanted to make note that there is interest from the Joint Powers Board in identifying a path forward for continuing similar collaborative work. Um, I will also note, not on your board packet, but the South Central Healthcare Coalition. Um, serving um the same counties, plus some additions, is not being funded by the federal and state government. As we move forward this year and into the current or into the next year. Um, so that will be a part of conversations around um regional collaboration and how we do work together and um. As we move forward. Um, the Joint Powers Board and the directors who form the existing advisory council are exploring those options. Um, and partnerships to see how we might fit into future efforts and avoid work that's duplicative. Um, but still um amplify strengths and align work as we can. Um, so we have a resolution um that we brought forward for you. Did you want me to read it? Not sure how we do resolutions. Okay, I'm seeing it all. And but I'm happy to. Awesome. Um, any questions that I might be able to answer, Commissioner Herg may be more informed than I am, having um having served as a representative on that particular.
So you want your. So this is, you're basically just dissolving. This because the funding dried up, right?
The funding went away in total totality last year. At December thirty-one, and they had some money that rolled over this year. And if we didn't use it up. It was going to remain natural area. So we said, no, let's, let's use it. They're willing to give us some money, we're going to use it till it's gone. That virtually here we are.
Make that motion, we, resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-one. We're second. Second. Move the segment to. Set resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. She cares.
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of updates. Um, I know that we had the consent agenda for these fund transfers, but I wanted to let you know that. The brownout to the fair um survey or an activity for adults for opioid settlement funds and we had two, but the. All results are being tallied on the prevention and education and support recovery came out. Unless clear front runners, so um we'll, we'll get that more detailed information to you as we move forward.
Do you know how many surveys?
It was a a drop a, drop a bead in a jar. Activity, and then we do currently have a survey open and we are looking for more. Just to take that survey, so we'll keep that open for a while longer.
How much have you promoted that survey? Um. Like, has it gone out on Facebook?
Yep, I think it's been on Facebook. I can revisit it now that the fair is over. We had it available at the fair and we had some cards we were handing out there as well.
I knew there was some things happening.
Yeah.
They looked at, awesome.
And our partners have been sharing it as well.
Good.
And Andrea asked again to keep promoting it. I saw that.
Sarah, back to the resolution. I know our partnership was at twenty-four hundred dollars. Are we going to? Put that toward anything else or just not? Use it at all?
That is a great question. So I know, so two-fold, I I want to make sure I heard your question correctly, so I believe that we will not need to to, they haven't done all the fine books, so I don't know that we'll need to. Put in our family share.
Right.
Um, and so that would be something that we certainly would be looking at in the public health budget as far as what other activities would may impact us or more. That we may need to supplement. Yep. Um, yeah, and then there'll be a final closeout of the fiscal for the J P A as well, and that will be after the. There's a certain number of things after them, that make sure that happens.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yep.
Nice.
Okay, then we will move on to uh. Tina. Uh, with a conditional use permit. Create upon. Closer than required seventy-five.
Did you take it up to the um Anderson conditional use permit? Uh, there's. Down below the C P, there's the request for board action and then the Anderson conditional use permit, that can read that up. Um, there is a map. On the last page of that document. Yeah. Just so that you have a concept. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um. Mr. Anderson has come before the planning commission requesting a variance from the setback. Regarding um installing a pond. And I will let you know that we had a good conversation with Chris Howard from Land and Water Resources. Um, as well as some conversations with Greg Heber on the septic. Uh, where that's at. The ground naturally, um. When it rains, the water naturally flows to that location. And so it's currently collecting rainwater. And what Mr. Anderson would like to do is to um create a pond filled naturally. And um, and because of the natural, there used to be a barn there which was removed. Um, properly removed. And so he's just taking advantage of the the hole left by the barn in order to create this pond. And there were some questions that were brought up in concern. Uh, what happens if the pond overflows, um though Chris seemed to think in those conversations that um. Uh. It would take a long time for the pond to fill up. Um, naturally, and so, but there would be a Colbert escape. Um, to allow a trickle out if the pond should become full. And um, so the planning commission did uh take a vote and recommended that the. Board of Commissioners approve the C U P request. And you do have a copy of the staff report um. And findings of fact in your packet, and I stand for questions.
Um. Was there a variance request that went along with this?
Um, so through the Unified Development Code, this particular request is under a conditional use permit by creating a pond and not a variance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it's a conditional use. Permit with the oversight that comes with that. There wasn't a a variance process?
There wasn't, it wasn't necessary because in the U D C, the code says that if you're going to create a pond, it's done by conditional use permit. And so by going through this, um, we, this process, we don't need to do the variance because the conditional use permit. Is is allowing for the placement of where it's at.
But are you, but are you D C does? Call for a setback that this pond does not meet?
Correct. But you can through the U D C in a way that pond is is going through the process and the U D C code.
Mm-hmm.
That this is the proper document. You wouldn't do both.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were covering our bases as far as. Yeah, process is here to make sure we do what we needed to. Thank you.
Yep.
The dwelling on the place, the house. You know, uh, where the septic runs from there?
There is a um rectangle box just north of the pond. Adjacent to the property line, so if you go over. That box go over to this way, yeah. So it's back in that area, um, quite a bit higher. And that's why we brought in Chris Howard and Greg Heber to make sure that the um. pond would not impact the septic. So we don't have the design for the pond yet. That will come in with the zoning permit. And at that time, we'll make sure that what is going in doesn't create an issue with the the mound system that the septic is at right now. And so, but currently the water is already, like I said, settling in that area to begin with. But the first step in the process is to say, can we put the pond in? And then the design of the pond, which we will then again bring in Land and Water Resources to help us work through that on the zoning permit. So right now it's just, can we build it? And then the next step is, here's our plan and we'll have an opportunity to. And the last thing he wants to do is jeopardize his, his septic system. He's been very, a very good person to work with, came in and said, here's what I want to do. What's the best way for me to do this? And then he's been very amenable to those things that we've asked him to do, so.
And I know you're working with Chris Howard on this, but so is the pond going to be burned in above grade?
It won't be above grade because currently there's, on where the barn went out, there's like an eight foot drop. And so what is scooped out to level out the field will come up to create more of a burn. And, and so I don't see it in the staff report. So yeah, so there it is intended to be burned. And about where the P is on proposed pond, the P for pond, there conceptually is an outlet there. And you'll notice in the conditional use permit, we've kind of caveated with one of the conditions is if that outlet, if it does flow and impacts the neighbor to the south, that, that he'll be responsible for repairs and mitigating it. So that is a condition of the of this, of the CUP. And again, Chris said, there's no watershed in that area. There's nothing that is contributing to and the, and the way that the ground is terrained.
Right, so nothing is if he didn't put the bond in, you're getting that same flow across the field as if he puts the bond in. But it's not being fed by a tile. It's just surface water.
Yes.
So it, it, it shouldn't change anything other than he's going to be holding more water.
Yeah. Yeah.
But Mr. Chair. Yeah, it's a very small watershed because it's just coming off of the yard. And they have a run into the pond. And then on the south side of the pond, there is a twenty four inch culvert that'll stick out of that burn. And then it was talked about having in the CUP in the conditions that if it was stay wet from on or if it was turned off that twenty four, you know, the neighbors land, then it would be the responsibility of Mr. Anderson to run like an eight inch or a six inch tile up from the ditch sub to that spot to drain that. So there would be no wet areas. I mean, if it stayed like this summer and kept on raining, you know, when it got wet on that south side, that there would be tile to take care of any damp areas created by the pond. Which if he didn't have a pond there, you'd probably still need some dig there to catch basin to catch that water. So the neighboring farmer would not. Well, yeah, I know that Chris is working with you on this.
Yes.
There must be setbacks for open water. Whether it's the drain field or the mound system, because if he's adding water to this proposed pond, what's going to keep besides the tile that's taking it out? We have five to eight inch rains, whatever it rains, wants to keep the mound system or the drain field from saturation with this excess water hill.
So we've, we've had some conversations, and again, it's all tentative because it's not been designed yet. But we've talked about lining the pond. Also, there's enough, you know, you have a mound and, and an absorption area and making sure that the actual location of the pound doesn't impact that absorption area. And, and we've had all of those conversations with Mr. Anderson and he's, yep, you know, what can we do? So this is the first step. Will he, will we allow them to build a pond? And then he'll have to come in for a, it's actually a land alteration and erosion control permit. And again, that goes directly working with Land and Water Resources and making sure that the design of the pond does those things. And it is something that Chris and I have talked about. We basically both have the same.
Just looking at, it looks like some of that water already rose back onto Fleming's land down towards the ditch anyway.
And this will prevent that from happening. We've not received, he said he hasn't received any complaints. And we did send a notification to Fleming that this was happening. We received no input back from him, so no objections. Usually if people object, they're going to let you know. And we, we just, he received a notification before it went to the public hearing for the Planning Commission. So he's very much aware of what's happening. And with the pond and that anticipation, it potentially would would prevent that from happening on a regular basis because it would only happen in an extreme rain. So.
What's the?
We seem to think that eight feet deep would be, take a really long time to fill up. I, I don't know. But again.
What's the setback from our lakes to a dwelling?
Oh, I, um, your impact zone?
Yes.
Quite a bit more than that. I want to say septic is, is, I don't have it in front of me. Yeah. Know that we won't allow, that that'd be a key thing that we look at is how the plant, how the pond is designed. And I believe he's working with the Hornickies on it. Is it will be done according to what is approved. And again, it's not been designed yet until we tell him it's okay to move forward. And, and we definitely can let the subcommittee know when the zoning permit comes in. Or excuse me, the land alteration permit will be what is, would be applied for. But we're very much aware of not allowing, not impacting the septic system. And right now there's nothing to prevent it. And this will actually, I think, help ensure that it's protected. Because right now it's just natural runoff.
So we're looking for, there's another question. We're looking for an approval of the very finding of facts, correct?
Yes.
And then we will move on to the CUP. Your conditional use permit. So right now I look for the motion to the approval of the findings of facts. I'll make that.
And I would second.
Move by Commissioner Melbrae, second by Commissioner Malter to accept the finding of facts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. And then I would look for the approval of the CUP in substantially the form appended to this memo.
Yes.
Memorating of understanding.
M W, and it says M E O, but I think it was supposed to be M W. Correct.
I didn't hear what your question was.
Substantially the form appended to this.
Okay.
M E O.
Memo, probably memo.
It was supposed to be.
Request for board action, yes.
Just missing it out.
I would make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, I'm Brad Crowe.
And move seconded to approve the CUP and substantially the form is presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. For Jim. Come back up with the leavenage tanks. Sad, unless you prefer me to give a presentation first.
Oh, oh.
Yes, that was two.
Page ten thirty, wasn't it?
At least not yet.
Yeah.
Front sometime.
Front sometime.
Let's, let's do that. So we don't, let's do that so we don't waste their time.
Don't waste your time.
Are you guys, I kind of forgot about. So thank you for coming today and you guys go ahead.
Well, good morning, all. My name is Greg Olson. I'm glad for coming here. Good luck with the day. Angie Phil Taylor from the planning and Doris Deegan, our public engagement coordinator, presenting our meeting today. Full old school and I like, like a piece of paper. On the left hand side, you'll see a presentation on the right hand side, the mapping that goes along with the six years. I'm looking to do that. So again, what we want to cover here today is again, giving you that big overview of the state. What does it look like in terms of the dollars and revenues that we're seeing, we're anticipating coming in over the ten year horizon and also over our ten year, excuse me, the twenty year statewide horizon and our ten year. And then we'll also talk about what we have going on here in Wausau County this year. How many years? On the next page there where you see the twenty twenty three leadership investment direction. Again, we've talked about this, what we talk about every year just to give you that context. Over the next twenty years, we're anticipating thirty six point seven billion dollars. But even today, we'll have the conversation that there still is, there's no projects and more needs and our dollars are available to us. But it does give you that good information and showing you where we're investing, you know, a majority of our dollars in capital improvement projects such as bridge, you know, pavements and roads under the structure. And again, if you recall, one of your projects in Wausau County, it's our portion of the ADA transition plan, which we're trying to achieve our ADA transition by twenty thirty seven, which is also part of the dollars if it's either part of you move forward. And just in District Seven thirteen counties, South Central Minnesota, thirty two hundred lane miles, a hundred forty, a hundred, excuse me, four hundred and seventy five bridges, ninety seven nine thousand seven hundred twelve, which we had to work on over a hundred of them last year after our portion of the flooding. And then about two, two hundred and ninety thousand population, we're about five percent of the state. So ten percent of the roads and bridges, five percent of the population, that goes into making those decisions in terms of the distribution of dollars. Population is kind of a surrogate for volume as you move forward. When they're talking about the dollars and how they're distributed. The next slide is that District Seven funding targets from twenty six through thirty seven. In our years past, when we consider all of Highway fourteen, the dollars that we can receive for the concrete throughout the years and some of the other one time funding, we were running between it's high of a hundred and eighty million dollars a year down to a hundred million dollars a year for the last four or five years. Pirates were just, there was that funding, a little bit of a funding change that went away from performance based that went into more of the physical asset in terms of the number of roads and bridges and the population you have. We see a reduction here in twenty six through twenty nine from where we were before. And really, when I go hard enough back, we were sixty to eighty million dollars per district. We went and had all those individual pots and monies that were able to secure. You know, we're kind of back to the sixty to eighty percent, sixty to eighty million dollar district. But that sixty eight million dollars starts to buy what useful you lost. And then what you see in twenty thirty up to twenty thirty five will be the impact of the two thousand twenty three legislative where they were, had the changes to act structure like where the auto covers and basin vehicles. I didn't see that. Welcome to the future. And then in that season. Again, we've been very successful through all the years in order to I I T A, the federal bill was set up with individual pots of money. And, you know, whatever we could find in terms of a pot of money that helped us to offset what our dollars that we do receive so that we can continue to push that towards pavements and bridges. And we're at that goal the last few years. You get a raise grant down in, set for the city of Worthington and then twenty four million dollars for a ponte pavement side concrete over there on ninety. And then the three Romney Bowls, that was a different pot of money, the one that nineteen, nineteen, ninety nine, nineteen thirteen is part of that funding package and that's a two thousand twenty six. Proven here. So again, when you think about, you know, you're, you're, fortunately for you, your planning horizon is shorter than ours. But, you know, we're, we're in that research and scoping. We're trying to think about better ways of presenting this information to you where we would give you a project for the years. And one of the things we're going to try and do also for our counties is give them a priority. So we're just at your county, they wanted to know on highway thirteen, which world segments were a higher priority to us so that we're all in alignment. So let me just say it's this year, this project, you know, being able to evade everybody, this is a little bit higher priority, kind of helps people to understand we are watching and watching out for the teacher, everything that we're seeing. But we do that in all years, we're bringing projects into the system. It's usually because of the condition or an infrastructure, geometric infrastructure need is when we're, the projects are coming into our, our chip years, the six years prior to the programming years. The programming years are that stiff where we assign that funding. And then obviously we have to find. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Angie, give you a little bit of a quick tour of instruction that we have coming up here. And they're also added this year some of our larger maintenance projects. One of them, there's two panels on Highway fourteen by the ethanol plant. So we say we're not, you know, in the past, we'd say, well, we don't have any projects. And then we turn around and do something that impacts you on Highway fourteen. It doesn't matter whether it's two panelled or, you know, a few miles of road, it does impact you. So we want to make sure that we correct for that.
Question, you can probably answer this and I missed it. Well, I'll be with it. The external portion of that funding.
On that bar chart there?
Yeah.
So that represents like ninety three from Anderson South, that was the bonding dollar that got that project started. That was almost thirty million dollars of exterior funding. The Worthington is exterior funding, the I ninety upgrade from a milliner overlay to a concrete overlay is external funding. We also received some freight dollars for one sixty nine in the Veterans Bridge in Macado. That's what that represents. The blue line is our everyday dollars. The green line is when we're able to secure some additional.
Where you see your, your bonding so that.
The legislature provided its bonding dollar in order for us to raise the grade.
So we don't have to use our district money to pay that bond back itself.
Right. Okay. That's rare. That the legislature would go and use capital, a bond dollar for roads and structures.
Okay. Thank you.
Some of the others you mentioned were, they were grants, like that Worthington project got a raise grant. So it's a federal grant that was received for that project based on its merits. So I'm going to walk you guys through a couple of maps here. So on the right hand side of your folder, you'll have three, eleven by seventeen is the first one's construction. The second one is the, it might say eight if at the top, we often just call it the SIF. So that has a list of all of the projects throughout District Seven and its own list. Um, so that has a list of all of the projects throughout District 7 and its own list that describes each one. And then the third map, it's just a map without any, uh, table on it. And that's, uh, those are the last six years of our plan. Um, so I'll go ahead and just get started. As Greg mentioned, you know, construction program, we have, a few things going on throughout the district. Um, I'm just going to kind of focus in on your area. Um, we don't have a capital project, which are the dark orange colored lines. Uh, but we do have a maintenance project that's sort of, that I think would probably be important to you all, which is, the, um, Highway 60 between Madison Lake and Waterville, we're doing a seal coat. So that's that entire distance there that'll be seal coated. And the, um, I think he also mentioned briefly, the Highway 14 westbound lanes will be closed for about a week. At the end of July or early August to replace some failed concrete panels. So there's going to be a detour for that. Um, and that is, um, this is around the ethanol plant. Um, so the detour will be between Casas 17, just west of Crystal Valley Coop. And Casas 33 at the ethanol plant near Jamesville. So it'll be an up and around kind of detour. So those are the, essentially those are the construction projects, if you will. So not capital projects, but nature's projects.
What, and what were, what were you planning on that?
Late. Late July, early August.
This year?
Yeah, this year. Yep.
Okay.
So be on the lookout for that situation. Um, and then at, so next you'll have, like I mentioned, a STIP or ATIP map. Um, for that particular, uh, map, you're going to see two projects on there. One is in New Richland, on Highway 14. We're already doing some of that ADA, uh, work on the sidewalks on Highway 30 through New Richland. Um, then we have a compliance goal by 2037. Um, so we're trying to, uh, in some cases, we're doing standalone projects, we're working on all the pedestrian infrastructure. And New Richland came up high on the list because of the various connections, uh, throughout that corridor that those sidewalks support. Uh, so that's one project. And then the other project is on Highway 13. We have some pipe or culvert work, uh, that we're doing up by the Walmart. So that's going to be worked on, um, it's going to be worked on in our STIP years.
On that culvert, uh, Highway 13, are you going to allow detour up that road while they put that in?
More than likely.
And if you, you've had, have you had discussion with our land and water person?
I can, I don't know. But my guess is we did because we don't usually do a standalone culvert.
Okay.
But I don't want to overscape that, but definitely, um, we'll, we'll make sure that connection's been made. Um, because it's usually, we don't do a, very often we do a culvert project. My assumption is there's been conversations.
It would be very important because obviously this is within the city of Wasika. It's on Highway 13. It also has to do with county drainage.
Okay.
And so.
Well, and then there's the whole process of county drainage.
Sure. Which is why.
Yeah, yeah.
Why I'm saying you really need to.
No, no, we. You're right. You're a hundred percent right. And, and that's, that's the good part about that, what the process that's around there. Is you do, you are able to bring in the county, the, the, uh, water boards. And so that everybody has a conversation. Not very many things happen in a culvert that everybody isn't aware of.
That reassures me.
Yeah.
That's, uh, and that's in construction year 2027. Sorry.
Yes, so we have some time to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, exactly. So any other questions on those two projects in the short term and for your program? Okay, so the last, uh, map that you have is the CHIP map. So you'll see a couple of projects, uh, in Wasika County on this map as well. So the first one that I'll talk about real quickly is on Highway 13, uh, from Wasika to Waterville. Uh, we'll be tackling that in the early 2030s. We recently did an overlay in this area to sort of help keep everything, you know, keep the road sealed up. Hold the road together. Um, project will also include a culvert replacement at the Waterville Creek. So that will be in the early 2030s. And then the second priority, so these are in priority order. So the second priority then will be on Highway 13. From downtown Wasika to the new, to southward to the new alignment on the south side of the town. And that project will be, um, some type of resurfacing project, um, in the mid 2030s. So that will be our second. So what we've done is, different from years past, instead of saying an exact year where we think we're going to tackle these. We're, we're kind of saying what the priority order is. So if the priority order doesn't seem correct to you all, or if you have some input on that, we would welcome that.
Right now. If I remember correctly, that road from Waterville to the center. I have a hard time believing that's going to, you haven't been working on it lately.
No, we've just been patching it. And the same situation that, um, Waterville to, uh, Wasika was a few years ago, right? We, we, we came to, you know, the point that we couldn't stay ahead of the patching on that. So we put the overlay on it. And that's why you see all the cracked seals on there. It's still reflecting through, but the longer we can keep the water out, the better off we. We just, we were just at, uh, sort of having the conversation about, uh, doing something similar to that. Uh, that's, you know, and everybody else is just a mind dot project. In our world, that's a maintenance project. And we use in my, our maintenance dollar, do that, which is not a problem. It's just the differentiation. So, uh, we're going to be taking a look at that. We've received, uh, quite a few comments about that road segment also.
I, the public. I'm believing that can make it right into the 30s.
Right. Like I mentioned, we have these projects that we do not.
I think it was actually scheduled for 26 somewhat years ago.
Yeah.
And there's concrete underneath that. Um, so they wouldn't even look at going in and milling off those exponential lengths just to smooth it out. To make over.
That's what maintenance is looking at right now. What can we do to help that? Um, you know, it's a combination of some milling and some passing for the short term. But then, uh, what, uh, you know, you're a hundred percent right, getting into 2030, even in early 2030s is a struggle. And you see how well it's, you know, performing here between Wasika and Waterville. So we'll be looking at something similar to that on that road and Highway 19, uh, west to Anderson. Uh, also, uh, in similar conditions.
Right. Yeah. Any other questions there? Okay. So we did provide a little bit of a graphic for you just to sort of see with the New Richland project. Uh, our private manager is Mary Deacon on that. In case anybody does need to reach out to her for, uh, questions or comments. Basically, we're doing sidewalk improvements throughout the corridor. Um, and then we'll be working with the city and utilities on seven to three locations. Um, one significant change will be the removal of the railroad tracks and crossing with this project. Uh, by reconstructing about 10 feet from either side of the tracks. Um, right now they're at 60% planned. Um, we have our construction easements. Um, and we are definitely kicking out the railroad. And that plant, that project is planned for 2027.
Oh, that's 2027.
Yeah, yeah.
And who did you say is that?
Mary Deacon. D I E K E N. Questions on, any other things on the. Okay. And then we also have, um, uh, Highway 13 culvert replacement. Um, the city that, the city has partnered with the district using about $300,000 from what's called our local partnership program. Um, and that would be to install new larger part pipes in Highway 13 near the Walmart. Um, and it will be delivered in fiscal year 2027 as well. Um, it is going to be an open cut to the highway in order to do it. Uh, and we understand that the county is currently working, uh, through drainage authority implications associated with.
That would take some vocal dimension.
Well, you have to forgive us because we revamped this presentation. And you guys in Wasoro County, you're the first ones. So we're finding that maybe there should be arranging. Do it our presentation or.
It is that I appreciate that. You already know that.
Yeah. So, um, with that being said, I mean, that is primarily our presentation. We do have some, uh, in your, in your packet, you'll see some, uh, website, uh, URL addresses. These are places that you can go and find information. You can get information on our projects and product managers. If you want to reach out to Mary Deacon, you could probably find her contact information out there. Um, so that's just ways to kind of keep connected with us and to, you know, look up any information you might want. Um, and beyond that, I think what, uh, what we would like to know, what we ask every year is what, county priorities are out there that you all know about that maybe we have not heard as of yet? That helps us with our, our planning and our process.
Well, I would just mention, you are probably already aware that, um, or maybe not. Uh, Freeborn County is working on, on getting, uh, regional trail visitation. And, um, and you're in that trail plan.
Yes.
We did a much trail planning with them. And so we recently had some meetings and, unlike Freeborn County who has acquired right of way, we don't have any right of way.
Okay.
Um, acquired at this point, uh, the railroad. We know that there's some possible railroad bid available. Um, we also have some thoughts about where it ought to go and what it ought to connect in Wasika County. And that would be great if we could give it to the Sycatatrus somehow. And obviously the big issue is going to be, how you get people over Highway 60 or under or whatever.
Yes.
And so, um, those are, those are.
Those are the good things. I know that's coming up through the system. I wasn't aware of it at this time. But we got dedicated funding for, uh, underpass on Highway 169. Now there's the pots of those monies, uh, to offset the cost of, uh, of that. I think, uh, the DNR paid for the culvert that goes underneath in 22. Um, uh, when the trail has to cross from the east side to the west side. So I think, and I know Jim is tracking these things too. Uh, that we can be thinking about that and looking for those, those pots of monies. And we're coming up at the end of this particular federal bill. So I have to look to see how they structure the next one. In terms of the dollars that may or may not be available.
I, I think I just want to say, we, we're looking at this and saying, you know, this would be good for Wasika County. But we look at the millions of dollars that we'll take and go, there is no way we can do this on our own. We're going to need to have a lot of partnership on it, but we are willing to look for that partnership.
And that's, that's, that's super important. And that's what's made the difference in these other locations. Is the willingness to, to look and write for grants, be a partner, which you're already well, well on the way to be doing.
So you would, uh, if, if the trails, um, was in line with, was available or whatever at the time of reconstruction between Wasika and Waterville would be ideal, right? And then you do that all at the same time.
You know, that's ideal is when we're, have a road closed and we can do those things like we did with 22. Uh, where we're actually, we're putting in the infrastructure underneath the surfacing. Um, to get that, that trail located. And, uh, still looking for the funding source to put the final aggregate base down in the trail itself. Uh, the hard circles for the trail. But every, there's, like you, we have partner agencies in that corridor. And I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, thank Jim, uh, for all the work that he's done. And he's a great communicator and, and, uh, works together with us. Um, and a pleasure getting to know Jim, he helps work with them. Our, um, state aid engineer, Willie Ruff.
Raymond Burke.
Raymond Burke. He's new. Uh, but he's a great resource to District 7. He's had over 20 years of experience on the county in Minnesota and Iowa. And, uh, he's been really great advocate for the county's and state aid system. So, so it's good to.
Yeah, one, two, three, four questions on the ethanol plant. And I brought it last year, you and your modern consideration line for the west side, had that been looked at?
Well, we did look at that. And, uh, right now with the traffic volume that we have and the gap structure that's out there. It's, it's adequate, um, for what we have right now. But, you know, putting it on the radars, what we continue up for. Uh, when we, uh, as, as, so this volume is going to be increasing on Highway 14. When we look at the development that's happened all along the corridor, uh, we anticipate that. That would be something we need to be looking for. Is there, uh, there might be another opportunity in one of the other funding sources to be able to, to make that improvement off.
And the other question on the culvert on Highway 14, I always thought was just at Jamesville.
Yes.
Is there any thoughts or?
So we've already built out that structure downstream. We had a good conversation as to whether or not that was the, uh, that was going to be, uh, a part of the restriction, downstream restriction. We came to the conclusion it was not. And so now it's kind of looking at Highway 14. Um, you know, just like in drainage, if I can't just go and, and put the road in there, what is the upstream impacts of that? Right? So, uh, so we're kind of continuing to take a look at that. Um, we do, uh, it's, you know, I'm, you know, I'm wrong long enough to build the road in it. But that's not a good deal. Um, but we know that before you did the work and we had good conversation with Jim, that it wasn't downstream. It could have been made. It has to be at the road and, uh, what would downstream impacts downstream impact?
Well, I appreciate the open cut on Highway 13 culvert that's going into this. That's going to make a big difference. I get to that a little bit faster.
Appreciate it. Okay? All right. Well, thank you again so much, uh, for this opportunity.
All right. Thank you for talking.
Yeah, we got our last action item, Resolution 2025 dash 32. Wheelage taxes. Yeah. So I'm kind of building part of this stuff for this morning. Uh, have a resolution that would, let me increase to the existing wheelage tax of, $10 per vehicle that was levied in 2014. It's accruing around $90,000 to $400,000 here at this moment in time. Uh, those dollars have been kind of stockpiled over time, weren't being spent. So in my time here, I, I've been buying that reserve, that account down and spending those dollars on COCO. Um, our COCO program, it's around 500,000 dollars here to, to miles, kind of like we talked about this morning. But, um, after this year, that account has been depleted. And just looking into the future, uh, that at the current rate of $10 per vehicle. As discussed this morning, it would take approximately three years to, uh, build that account up and up to pay for one year's COCO. So what I proposed in our budget discussion this morning was to pay for COCO next year with some reserve dollars. Uh, kind of as a recovery year for wheelage tax account. Um, but again, that math kind of is, doesn't pencil out. Um, so today kind of looking, and this, this all, emanates from, um, budget discussions at staff level. Um, with Michael and the committee level, uh, to bring this forward to the board at this point in time, uh, to increase the wheelage tax. To $20 per vehicle, which would then generate 380 to 400,000 dollars a year. Kind of, again, slow that lead on our reserve dollars that we have for infrastructure. And maintain a healthy balance, um, for the unknowns in the future. I think I don't know. I think I should stop talking.
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2025 32. Second, or, been moved second to, uh, said Resolution 2025 dash 32, wheelage tax increase, to $20. The other discussion. Did you, you said that we were doing 22 miles this year? Um, right in that 20.
It is 20 to 22. I, I can't exactly call it exactly two.
You have a, you know, I know you say it's up to 550,000, but that doesn't include our cost of ERA, right?
Correct. That is under maintenance, I know it's small, 30,000 a year, 35,000.
And 550 is just.
Contractor costs.
Contractor cost. Which includes the oil. And contracted cost, which includes the oil and then all later. And they come and get the B rock, get out of the pile?
Yep, yes.
Maybe we don't haul it too long.
And then striking two. Block seal that we've been doing last few years after the seal coat. Even after seal coat, we've been at five hundred and fifty thousand.
So, yeah, I didn't realize this. Just the cost of the contractors above twenty-five thousand a mile.
Yes.
And then you would project that, you know, how many of the tumulus mines we have. I'm testing you now.
Yep. It's about, it's, okay. Um, it was four hundred and seventy total miles. Yes, so we have about a hundred and five miles of gravel, eighty miles of concrete. The balance is, is, uh, so two hundred, two hundred and seventy, two twenty-ish.
So about every ten years, you hope to seal coat.
Yeah, yeah. And we historically have been seal coating the year after the pavement goes down. And then maintaining, then that road may see two or three seal coats in its life.
Because that will, that will vary by track, but probably.
Yeah, and we're kind of assessing, you know, transfers cracks and, and all of that to see. And, and plow speed damage that chills seal oversight. So looking at that sort of stuff too.
Sure.
Or what's different.
Good. The other discussion. If not, I would ask the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. She appears, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We had, um, not, we had on county three, there was, we're at the town fraction in small, but it did not. Yeah, but, but.
So, Sheriff, can we do the close session before you?
Yeah.
Commission reports in the administration, just because I have a question.
First one, Chris, this is a road tour on your radar.
Yeah, I should be maybe sending out an email here, um, soon. We've kind of been hitting late August for that. I think that would be good. Again, this year just what the construction is working on.
I'll still need to update it to be quick.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you. Um, we probably don't have an administration update. We don't. We've been having the HR announcements, right?
Correct.
Nothing further there. Uh, we've been having a community, uh, your report.
Yeah, I just don't know if you have any questions. The only thing that I'd like to maybe point out is, um, at the next county board meeting, um, I'll be bringing a residential tax abatement. The city granted the residential tax abatement in April of two thousand twenty-four. And, um, somehow it missed coming to the county and, and it could have been me not sending it. Um, or lost in the shuffle as it was transitioning. I'm not sure where it's at, but, uh, city did send me over their documents. It was approved at their April sixteenth meeting of twenty twenty-four. So it's, um, payable in twenty-six and, um, they'll all be bringing the document to you at, at the next meeting. And, uh, the only other thing is, I know I sent an email out, a Green Seam celebration of Ag is July twenty-fourth. And, um, Doug has claimed a ticket and, and I can go, but there's still one ticket. If anybody's interested, we, we get three as investors in Green Seam. Um, didn't know if somebody, it's a baseball game, but they have a whole program before it gets there and.
Thank you. You guys look ahead over if you have any questions, uh, at all. Thank you. All right, and I'm going to forego commission reports this meeting. We'll double up the next meeting, so then we will meet in a closed session. Okay, guys.
You, thanks, Jim.
Yep. Got a project.
Yes.
Road two and three.
And next, we're going to need to record that.